Okay, let's call the May 20th regular city council meeting to order. Let's do pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Fruein.
Here.
Councilmember Mohan.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here. Do we have a closed session report?
We have no closed session report out today.
Okay, thank you. Then we have one ceremonial item, the recognition of Public Works Week, which is from May 18th to 24th. We don't have a presentation. However, this is a very important week. Public Works provides support for a lot of the infrastructure in Cupertino. I'm proud to recognize and proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th as the 65th Annual National Public Works Week here in the city of Cupertino. This year's theme is People, Purpose, and Presence, highlights our public works professionals vital yet often unseen work. Tonight, we celebrate their impact on our community. I think a lot of times when it rains, when there are drains that's clogged, we are all in our safety of home, but a lot of Public Works staff is going out and trying to solve these problems. And they clean the street, they install traffic signals. And the city is able to function and is because a lot of unseen work done by Public Works. Looking ahead, we are excited to unveil the newly renovated all-inclusive playground at the Joliment Park, which is also done by the Public Works team. Amazing playground, June 13th Friday at 1:00 p.m. I hope to see many of the community members there. And this is a playground for a lot of the special needs children. So on behalf of the Cupertino City Council, thank you, our Public Works Department and staff for your commitment to our city. We truly appreciate all that you do. Thank you. So the proclamation will see clerk would hand the proclamation to the Public Works Department.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Postponents and orders of the day. So today we are, we have a council member who couldn't start the meeting earlier, like 5:30, so we had to start at 6:00. But another council member will have to leave close to 10:00. So we have to do need to run a tighter ship today. For that, I would like to move item 17 before item 16. So we... Wait, sorry. I think I got the number wrong. That, sorry. I would like to move item 21, the study session, which I originally hoped to have at 5:30, but we couldn't. I would like to move item 21 to before item 20. So that we then take the time with the third quarter financial report and get all the action items down. So that's the motion is to move item 21 before item 20.
Moore, second.
Thank you. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we have the oral communications. City Clerk, thank you.
Yes, Mayor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first come, first heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may however briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. So I, Mayor, I have one request to speak from Community Hall so far, and one hand raised virtually. Just a reminder, anyone wishing to provide comments on this item, please have your request to speak submitted in the next nine minutes. So we have Jean Bedord from in Community Hall.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. I'm here to complain. I object to the arbitrary changes in the Legistar posting process for city meetings. Suddenly, public comments are being posted on individual agenda items rather than as a single document for each day. This happened starting at the last council meeting with no notice of the change nor consideration of the impact on residents' use of the Legistar platform. Why do I object? I review the agenda when it is published. Public comment, desk items, and supplemental reports are posted on either Monday or Tuesday around 5:00 o'clock or so. I print the entire document of new information and take it with me to browse at the start of the council meeting. New information is not the least bit obvious with the posting to individual agenda items. The blue links all run together on the agenda item, so it's hard to identify the modifications. And it's totally impossible on a cell phone. Mayor Chow, why this barrier to transparency? It's difficult and convoluted for residents who are trying to delay to stay informed. I urge you to immediately change back to the previous process of formatting written communications into a single document. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jean. And I see one hand raised virtually from a member of the public. That is San Rao. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I am deeply disappointed by your vote last meeting to not defund projects that are costing the city a significant amount of money. We had an opportunity to reduce our spend by $7 million on the PV project where grants will not be coming. The federal administration is not supporting the Inflation Reduction Act, and we have seen no indication that the Inflation Reduction Act grants are still being honored by the current federal administration. Rather than probe on that and understand the fiscal impact, the PV project was approved because certain council member views environment as a pet project despite having ran on the campaign promise of fiscal responsibility. It is not fiscally responsible to spend $7 million of our money when general fund reserves have dropped over $20 million and our expenses exceed our revenues. I wish to remind the council member that just ran and won this last election that they were elected by members of the public that opposed a number of the things that the council member is supporting. However, the council member continues to vote against the mayor and the candidates he ran with. And this is to the members of the public that voted for her, a completely astounding act because all campaign promises were made jointly, the candidates ran jointly, and they even sent out a full page campaign flyer saying they will listen to the residents and do the hard work. And neither are they listening to the residents nor are they doing the hard work to validate if the $7 million will in fact be offset by Inflation Reduction Act grant funds. I also had a chance to speak to neighbors in the Ranch or in Conada area this weekend and ask them about their experience on SCB as far as the right turns and intersections are concerned. And unanimously, all of the block party residents of Ranch or in Conada that I spoke to had a negative impression of the Wolf Interchange at SCB. All of them objected, saying the bike lane, once you turn on, cannot be cleaned, and therefore bicyclists are on the main lanes of the roadway because the lanes have debris, the bike lanes, and they see significant backlog, and they expect to see even worse backlog once the rice is built. So I urge you to consider how you can reverse this. We are not done with the budget process yet. We need to make deep cuts in order to bring us back on a fiscally responsible path. And I urge you to reconsider the $7 million spend on the PV project and to listen to residents who you promised that you will listen to. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And next we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, councilmembers. Mayor, I want to thank you again for looking into the issues of student housing for Foothill Deans College on McCollum Road. As you know, the apartment there is the only, as we might call, naturally affordable apartment and just about the only one in Cupertino. I did some look for comps, and I only found 14 units that would be, you know, within 10% of the rent, actually 10% higher, and within 10% of the square footage, and that would have actually been 10% smaller, that existed within our city limits. So having those residents evicted, I have a really hard time with that word, is really bad for our city. And, you know, having housing, housing that is within a half a mile walking distance to K-12 should have K-12 students. And that will pretty much not be the case if the Foothill Deans College School District, College District buys this property. And in addition, the people who would be living there would not only be going to Deans College, you could say, well, there's an argument to be made about that, but they'd also be going to Foothill and Sunnyvale, which are the commit campuses, which are much further away. So, you know, from a, you know, from a, you know, walkability standpoint, we really need to have this housing be for all residents of Cupertino, not just for a select few. The other thing that I find is particularly morally reprehensible is the idea of evicting our residents. So, you know, when Prometheus bought that property in 2022 for quite a bit less money than they are planning on selling it for, they were not allowed to evict residents. There's a law, AB 1480, I think it's 1482, I don't remember now. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so here I am. But anyway, there's a law that says you just can't evict residents just because. And Prometheus was not allowed to, not allowed to evict residents. But the college district can come in and use a loophole to do so. And it's just, it is just so incredibly wrong. It keeps me up at night. And I'm really hoping that you guys can stop this from happening and help the college district find a better place. Of course, from the perspective of a taxpayer, this is a really poor use of our money because we're not, we're not creating new housing. We're just, we're just shifting people around. And, you know, those folks who are there now will probably have to move out of the city, and that's just not okay. So thanks for all your hard work. Much appreciated, and have a good night.
Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. I'd like to respond to the change in where documents are located. We used to have one doc for all the supplemental reports and desk item. It has been hard to get to know this important information for one agenda item. So my, I had suggested to City Clerk whether it's possible to put supplemental reports and desk item under each agenda because I found the same whole say, and the Sunnyvale were able to do that. So City Clerk found a way. But in addition, they also put written communication under each agenda item, which I think makes sense because the City Clerk has been splitting public comments for each agenda item into different documents since early 2024. But where I have asked whether, how much staff work it would be to still produce this combined oral comment. So we are still exploring. We don't want to put, to post it in too many places so that the City Clerk has too much to work. So we take the comment too hard, we'll look at, see. Yeah, we will see if we can possibly have some script to combine them. Thank you. So next we have consent agenda item. We have five meeting minutes and a few items because it's right before the budget adoption, so they have to come at this time. So it's kind of a long consent agenda. Do we have any requests to pull items?
Mayor, I'm not aware of any requests for items to be pulled.
Okay. But I do know that at least one council member would like to make a comment on an item. And I have pointed out that in the revised procedures menu, we do allow question and comments for items on the consent agenda. Councilmembers, I'm reading from the procedures menu. Councilmembers shall be given the opportunity to ask clarifying questions about or make a brief comment about an item on the consent calendar without being required to remove the item from the consent agenda. I borrowed the language from the Los Altos Council norms and procedures. So that's in our procedure. Therefore, council member would be able to do that after the public comment. Do we, maybe we can go to public comment first?
Yes, Mayor.
Public comment, yeah.
I have one request to speak from Jean Bedord regarding item nine. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I'll be brief. My only point in speaking with regard to the consent calendar is to make the public aware of our legal bills. In the February accounts payable, we are paying Elshire and Wonder $22,858. Now that's just for the month of February, before we really got into the lengthy meetings and closed sessions. So I would advise the public to really keep an eye on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Mayor, I see no additional requests to speak.
Okay. Now let's bring it back to the council. Anyone would like to first make a motion or have questions or comments? Councilmember Fruein.
Just as a point of order, I'd ask your indulgence for us to consider separately item 17 because I would like to vote against it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion in the consent calendar approve 1 through 16. Oh, it's actually not 1, but 3 through 16.
Moore, second, but I would like to make a comment.
Yeah.
So with regards to item 14, I'm sure the council agrees that we want to express our gratitude for the $70,000 donation to the Senior Center by the Houston Living Trust for purposes as needed. Thank you very much.
Yeah, same for the gratitude for the $70,000 donation from the Living Trust. So, Councilmember Mohan, you would like to...
No, I just had a quick question following up on the vice mayor's comment. Is what exactly will be, will we as a council be doing to acknowledge the substantial donation from Houston Living Trust?
Yeah, I think I asked that in the supplemental report.
I saw that, and it said that the Director of Parks and Recreation will be sending out a thank you.
We'll issue a letter, yeah. And I want, so you think we should, we should give them a certificate? We can issue a certificate of appreciation to thank them?
Yeah, in the supplemental, we mentioned that for any donation we receive, the practice has been the Parks Department will send out a thank you letter. And in this case, if council desires, we're also happy to issue a certificate of appreciation for this.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, and then I'd like to thank staff for answering questions. I had questions on quite a few items. Thank you for that. And especially on the SP 1 project, the past projects that we have funded. So any other comment, then we can vote on, oh, councilmember Fruein.
I'll make my comments on 17 when we get to it.
Okay. So we'll vote on the current motion, items 3 to 16.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, anyone would like to make a motion on item 17?
I'll make a motion to approve item 17.
Okay, I'll second that. Then councilmember Fruein.
Yeah, I just want to note my dissent on this particular item. I think it would have been appropriate for us to have had a separate discussion on each of the bills. I will note that I do agree with the proposed positions on SP 753, AB 650, and SP 501. I'm not sure why we are taking the time to oppose SP 79 when it does not impact the city of Cupertino. I also think that that probably hurts our ongoing reputation as an anti-housing city. And I similarly have concerns about the positions proposed on AB 648 and AB 340 that I think needlessly antagonize our representatives in Sacramento, specifically Assembly Member Aaron's.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, let's vote.
Real quick, I just want to thank the fact that our legislative review committee is back and thank my subcommittee member, Vice Mayor Moore. I think we've had an opportunity to finally make an impact. For too often in the city, we've been in reactive mode, reacting to legislation that's put upon us. We now to take a proactive mode, understanding the legislation, working with other cities to fight back for local control and not necessarily be bullied by outside interest. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We represent our residents after all. So let's vote then.
The motion carries with Mohan and Fruein voting no.
Okay. So next item is item 18. The modification to a previously approved development permit and architectural site approval for Westport Development. So I would like to apologize for our early dismissal last time. It was unexpected for us also. And thank you for accommodating this yet another meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this item, it is the modification for a previously approved development permit. And again, as you mentioned, it's a continued item from the last regularly scheduled meeting. Tonight, you will hear from staff from the Community Development Department, and you will also have an opportunity to hear directly from the applicant before council deliberates. And with that, I will turn it over to our CDD team to take it away. Thanks.
Good evening. John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development. As introduced by the mayor, it's the Westport Building 1 modifications. So again, as, I'm not going to reread what the mayor already introduced. So a quick background on the, on the application and on the Westport development as a whole. We can safely say that the Westport development is divided into three different parts. You have Building 1, which is on the agenda tonight, which is the light blue building on the eastern portion, which is the assisted living facility, mixed use. Building 2 and also a mixed use building, which uses the 48 BMR units that's been occupied for about a year. And then you have the Townhomes Row House portion, which is the 88 market rate Townhome Row House portion, which is, I believe, got their final certificate of occupancy this week. So background, Building 1 modification. So again, City Council approved the Westport development as a whole on August 19th, 2020. The current program of the Building 1 portion is approved through modification permits, approved at the council level on December 21st, 2021. The application request, it can be summarized as the following. Utilizing the remaining density bonus incentive concession to reduce the amount of retail on their portion from 17,600 square feet to 4,000 square feet. Request, excuse me, density bonus to increase senior assisted living dwelling unit count by 13 units from 123 to 136. Utilize provisions of state law, specifically AB 2097, to remove the underground parking. Minor adjustments to the physical, the physical look of the building, not necessarily removing any floors, but essentially reducing the square footage by about 4,000 square feet. And last but not least, waive the application of the Parkland dedication levy, those that have already been paid as well as future payments for the increased unit count. So the first thing to analyze is what is currently entitled and what is proposed. On the left, you see in the red, the retail portions of the ground floor of Building 1 that have been entitled since 2021. You can see the ground floor along Stevens Creek Boulevard, which is on the south end, is all retail and a little portion to the north end of the building towards Mary Avenue. What they're proposing is to move a lot of the functions that were on the sixth floor down to the first floor, such as the swimming pool, some of the lounges and gyms and wellness centers to the ground floor. So essentially, you still have active uses along Stevens Creek Boulevard, but just not retail. And maintain the retail on the corners, such as on the eastern edge, on the corner of Mary Avenue and Stevens Creek Boulevard, as well as the driveway coming into the Westport side from Stevens Creek Boulevard. So the reduction of retail is being used through their density bonus request for an incentive. They were allowed to have two for the original development, and they've only used one. And that original one was for the consolidation of BMR units in a single building, which has already been built, as mentioned before. And so they are requesting use their second available one for this reduction. And so the reason, so with the concession incentive, there has to be a financial reason. And the reason, which the applicant can further explain as well, is that if Building 1 is not constructed, Building 2, the BMR building, will have to take on much of the maintenance costs for the common areas shared between all three portions of the, of the development. So the assisted unit count. So Westport provides about 12% of its base density as affordable to very low income households. So it's entitled to a 38.75 density bonus. The total number of units in development would increase from 259 to 272. This, that number is again the combination of all three portions of the development. Essentially only using 12.8% of the density bonus where 38, almost 39% is allowed. The increase for Building 1 specifically would be from the current 123 assisted living units to 136. It also increases compatibility with the BMR unit size and mix. What that means is one of the findings that council made when they approved the project originally was that the BMR units would have to, in accordance with the city's BMR programming manual, that the market rate units and the BMR units would have to be similar in programming. They actually are, as analyzed in the staff report, the amount of one bedroom studios and two bedroom units are pretty much equivalent, as well as in size and whatnot. Between Building 1... 1 and Building 2. For the parking reduction, the applicant sought to use AB 2097, which prohibits cities from requiring minimum parking requirements on projects that are within a half mile of a major transit stop. The city staff was advised that because this, the Westport project was entitled prior to January 1st, 2023, I believe, that the AB 2097 does not apply to this project, therefore the parking reduction is not guaranteed under AB 2097. So, here's a quick comparison between what was previously approved on the Building 1 parcel and what is proposed. One of the concerns that was coming from the community, particularly when the applicant for this site did outreach with residents living in the West, currently living in Westport, in the Westport community, was will they still have access to the parking spots that were guaranteed to them or promised to them in the original entitlement? And they are. So, the, you know, about 26 spaces are available for the Building 2 residents on the Building 1 site, as previously approved and proposed, as well as six parking spaces for the townhome portion. Further, seven spaces will still be provided for the retail portion of Building 2 on the Building 1 site. And again, in discussing with the applicant about the flexibility in parking standards, if they can't use AB 2097, you know, this is within a planned development zone, which means that there is, by municipal standards, they can't have flexibility with the parking count. The applicant has worked with staff to analyze what similar developments around the Bay Area, particularly in the South Bay, utilize for their parking needs. And so, you see what was previously approved in the far left column, what's proposed for the Building 1 site, and what can be expected. So, as an example, currently proposed, they have three spaces for residents, but what's really expected is it's probably 17. So you have a delta, I'm sorry, a 14 right there. So, all in all, they have about a 20, approximately 20 space or 19 space, 20 space deficiency of what's really, what they're really seeing the programming of a similar use to what they've proposed. And so this project has been conditioned in the modification resolution that the applicant does provide 20 further onsite parking spaces than what they had proposed. And so the parkland dedication lieu fee, again, they've already paid approximately $3.6 million to the city. And, you know, with $30,000 per senior unit, they would have to pay about $300,000 more. And they're requesting, for various reasons, which I will allow the applicant to describe to you in further detail, about how they, why they are requesting reduction of that payment or elimination of that payment. The Planning Commission did hear this item on April 22nd of this year, where they recommended approval of the project 5-0 to adopt the first amendment of the EIR, as well as the resolutions approving the project with two added conditions. That, the first one is a transportation management program is required prior to building permit issuance. And there was a condition regarding retail parkland lieu dedication fee, where if the applicant was willing to increase the proposed retail square footage from 4,000 to 8,000 square feet, that the, that the, there will be a refund of the $3.6 million that they've already been paid, and further would not have to pay the approximately $300,000 for the further park mitigation fee for the 13 proposed additional units. This did go, the original application was, for the original application, a final EIR was prepared, and it was approved by council on August 18th, again, 2020, with the original project. Under CECL guidelines, any significant modification to the project can be analyzed with the EIR addendum. And so, Placeworks, the original consultant on this project did do that, and they found that there's less of an impact between the original EIR and what they're proposing. So the recommended actions that the City Council adopted, proposed draft resolutions, including the Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the first addendum to the EIR and approve the development permit amendment, and approve the architectural site approval, as enumerated in this slide. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comparison tables. Those are very helpful and very clear.
Thank you.
So, we'll have council questions first?
Mayor, now may book a time for council members to disclose any expertise communications prior to deliberation.
Oh, right, thank you for a reminder, yeah. Yeah, so I think I have met with the applicant twice, and thank you for meeting with me. And then after the Planning Commission, I met with them again. They really were seriously considering the option of how they can offer more retail space. So, really appreciate that you always accommodate the city request and address residents' concerns, especially the parking. So, anyone else? Council member Fuhrer and council member Mohan?
Yes, likewise, I've had a conversation with the applicant after the Planning Commission meeting. I felt like it was a very good and collaborative meeting that showed that the applicant is very interested and serious about trying to meet the retail request.
Council member Mohan?
I do have met with the applicant before the Planning Commission meeting and have had a couple of phone conversations with him during the course of these deliberations.
Oh, I have as well. I didn't know you were going down the line. So, sorry. Yeah, I've met March 27th with them as well, after the Planning Commission meeting as well. Thanks.
Great. Now, should we have the applicant present now?
It would be helpful for you to hear from the applicant before you deliberate.
Mm-hmm. And I think before our question, public comments, right? I think that would be helpful.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you to the City Council, as well as the planning staff, the public at large as well, for giving us the opportunity to provide an update on the Westport Cupertino project. My name is Balance Simsek. I'm a Senior Vice President of Development with the Related Companies. And before I get started, maybe I can talk a little bit about Related and our company, just for the benefit of the public and the council. So Related Companies was started about 60 years ago. It's one of the largest privately held real estate development companies in the country. The company was originally formed to develop affordable housing primarily. And since that time, we've developed some 55,000 units across the country, 13,000 units of which have been developed in California. Today, we develop all kinds of real estate for different demographics and different income levels. And obviously, tonight, we're talking about a senior housing project. And then, lastly, I would just note that Related tends to be a long-term owner of our projects that we build. So we don't typically sell projects that we develop. We're not a merchant builder. So we intend to be a long-term, you know, member of this community in Cupertino. So with that, I'll jump into the project description, and John did a fantastic job going over, so I'll try to be quick. But I guess most precisely, the project as currently designed is just not feasible for us to build. We spent the last three years trying to get this project financed. We've gone out to a large number of financial partners and lenders to try to get capital for this project, and we've been unsuccessful. I'm sure you can imagine that Related is a large, you know, company that has quite a wide array of contacts in this field, and unfortunately, we can't overcome the economic realities of where we are today. So, the inflationary environment that we've experienced over the last four years have been quite unprecedented, as I think everybody in this room will acknowledge. Construction costs are up some 42% since 2020. To put that a little bit into perspective, that's a $100 million project in 2020. Today would cost an additional $40 million on top of that. So you can see, it's an extremely significant impediment for developers to get projects like this done. Operating costs similarly are up 20 to 30%, including labor, insurance, utilities, food. Interest rates have gone from 0 to 5%. And on top of that, commercial real estate valuations have dropped by some 10 to 15%. This doesn't take into account the tariff conversations that are going on nationally, which will further exacerbate, you know, the cost concerns that we have with a lot of our supplies coming from places like Canada, Mexico, China, and elsewhere in the world. So, where does that leave us? We know that we need to have some pretty significant cost reductions on the project if the city is interested in getting this project built. The revised entitlement request, which John went over, is for 173 units, 4,000 square feet of retail, 73 surface park stalls, and a request to eliminate the park fees. The addition of the 13 RENA-qualified units will actually be done while at the same time reducing the massing of the building. We're also requesting to eliminate 50,000 square feet of underground parking. As I think I've communicated to most of you, the estimate of that reduction is some 10 to $15 million of cost to the project, so this is very significant. The reduction in retail to 4,000 square feet is also done to cut costs. We need to make space for other uses on the ground floor. And with the reduction in parking, obviously, that limits our ability to make, create viable retail opportunities on the ground floor. And then lastly, we're asking for a reduction of $4 million of park fees. We are, in fact, providing a 12,250 square foot public park on our property that will be maintained in perpetuity by the Related Companies. And in addition, you know, we feel strongly that our resident base, which is typically folks aged 83 to 85 years of age on average, will not pose significant wear and tear on the city's public park infrastructure. All of this is based on a state-recognized need to address housing shortages. The unit count increase and retail reduction, as was noted by staff, is being pursued under the state density bonus law. Parking reduction is being pursued under AB 2097, which prohibits cities from imposing minimum parking requirements on development projects within a half mile of major public transit. This project clearly is within a half mile of public transit. I know that the city has taken a position that AB 2097 does not apply. We strongly disagree with that interpretation. And I think many of you have received letters from our partners at the Housing Action Coalition, as well as the MB Law, outlining their position on AB 2097 and its impact on this particular project. And then lastly, the park fee reduction, we're pursuing this under the housing element. So, the city itself put forth a housing element that was approved by HCD at the state, which expressly required the city to explore reductions in park fees as a method to make housing more affordable. So, we'll talk a little bit, or I'll talk a little bit more about the, you know, how that applies to this particular project with respect to the park fee. But I think this project, more than most, would be a great opportunity for the city to actually make true on its promise through the housing element to relook that. And I apologize, I haven't been saying next slide, but next slide, please. So this is just a description of the overall decrease in the height and bulk of the project. On the left is the current plan. On the right is a proposed plan, and you can see the increased setbacks highlighted in red on the Level 6 floor. You can also see the reduction in the parking garage on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. On the left here is the existing plan and the current basement floor that exists. It's 50,000 square feet and houses 146 parking stalls and approximately 8,200 square feet of back of house space. The proposed plan eliminates all of this while moving the 8,200 square feet back up to the ground floor. And this is partly why the retail component is so challenged on that floor. As John noted, I just want to highlight again publicly that we've had many conversations with the constituents around our property, both the Westport Seniors Building, as well as the Townhome Residence. And I want to make clear that we're not suggesting or asking to eliminate our requirement to provide 39 stalls of parking for those residents. So as John laid out, we'll provide those stalls, 33 to the Westport Seniors Building, and then additional six to the Townhome Building, as was originally required under our entitlement. Next slide, please. John already went through this. I won't spend a lot of time here, but on the right-hand side, I guess the one thing that I will note is, we have been having discussions with various stakeholders, including members of the Planning Commission and City Council, about potentially reorienting the existing 4,000 square feet, or I should say, the proposed 4,000 feet of retail, to be more allocated along the central green area. We are looking at that, and we think that's a reasonable request and one that will ultimately be a benefit to the project. Next slide, please. And so this is a discussion around the elimination of the park fee to further reduce costs. The code actually allows for a parkland dedication of 17,800 square feet in lieu of a fee. Our project is providing 12,250 square foot public park. So that's approximately 70% of the requirement. That if we were to hit, we would have an exemption for this $4 million. So we're nearly all the way there. And on top of that, as I highlighted previously, our resident base is typically folks who require care and assistance with daily activities, typically aged about 85 years of age, and they pose very little wear and tear on the public park infrastructure. This is the right project to put the city's housing element commitment into action. Next slide, please. And with that, I'd like to just hand it over quickly to my partner at Oakmont, so you guys can hear a little bit about Oakmont Management Company and our plan to operate the building. Terry is a Vice President of Operations at Oakmont.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and members of the City Council. As Balance shared, my name is Terry Irvin. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Oakmont Management Group, and we're working with Related to hopefully open and operate the Westport Assisted Living Community. Oakmont Management Group has been serving seniors for more than two decades. Oakmont is one of the largest providers of assisted living services in California and currently have 98 communities under management and four projects that are currently under development. Half of those are in Northern California. We take care of more than 10,000 residents and employ more than 8,500 team members. We have completed more than 40 development projects, much like this one, from start to operation. Just like Related, our goal is to continue to manage these communities for the duration. While we take great care of a large number of residents and employees, our success comes from focusing on operational excellence, senior wellness, and being a good steward to our community. Next slide, please. While many of you have likely had a personal experience with an assisted living community, I think it's still a good idea to clarify the role that we'll be playing in the senior living continuum. Of course, there are several housing options for seniors, many of whom would live in their home, but for those that were choosing other housing options, there's active aging, 55 and over communities, independent living communities, and on the very other end of the spectrum, nursing homes, skilled nursing options. So, we are providing assisted living, and that is a needs-based housing alternative that is amenity-rich and provides the comforts of home combined with safety systems and care options. Some of our residents will require no care whatsoever, but others will be able to provide care for them for the duration of their life. We'll have several apartment home options, from large two-bedroom, two-bath apartments to one-bedroom to studio, and even shared apartment options, being able to work with a variety of different budgets. Services will include transportation, of course. Services will include transportation, of course, daily activities, chef-prepared meals, and personalized care and medication management. We're also dedicating a large number of these apartments to assisting those with dementia and Alzheimer's. In this setting, we'll provide a secured area where folks or staff are specially trained, and we'll have programs to assist those folks with a memory impairment. Of course, in that environment, we also offer transportation, activities, and chef-prepared meals. Next slide, please. We've talked about this, and you've heard about this before, but there is a senior housing crisis in the United States. The senior population is growing rapidly. Between 2010 and 2020, the population of people 65 and over grew by 38.6%. 10,000 Americans turn 65 each day. By 2030, one in five of us will be over the age of 65. We'll call this a demographic tailwind. Housing for seniors has not grown, though, just like Ballant discussed. Interest rates being higher, and of course, with the pandemic, maybe developers have decided to stop building assisted living communities entirely. This is a real problem nationwide, but it's not difficult to see the issue in Cupertino. Right now, there are only 312 assisted living and memory care units within three miles of us. Out of these three communities, two of them are over the age of 25 years and one's 50 years old. And two of these are CCRC models, which are a completely different model than what we're offering in the month-to-month rental, which is what we have. We look at something called a penetration rate, which is the percentage of available assisted living apartments based on the number of seniors and needs in the area. According to our numbers, Cupertino has the smallest penetration rate, meaning the lowest number of available assisted living apartments per capita compared to any other community in the Bay Area, which is far below what we should have. Next slide, please. So I'm here today talking a little bit about parking. In this Westport project, parking, of course, is something that we've modified. We were working alongside Related to review the parking needs for this community and then talk about the needs. And we have determined there are three constituencies of parking users, of course, for this project, residents naturally, and our staff, and then families and guests. Next slide, please. So let's talk about our residents for a second. I think when we have determined the originally needed parking spaces, it's determined on a factor that is overly conservative. The city requires a half a stall per bedroom, and that is not what is required in the assisted living setting. The images that you see here are from one of our communities in San Francisco, and the residents there are recognized less than 8% utilization rate. And as you can see, for this community of 200 residents, there are 44 available parking stalls and only 17 vehicles using the parking. Now, that's one of our downtown settings. In our suburban communities of roughly 100 units, we're recognizing 10% or less of utilization rate from our residents. Now, let's talk actually what residents use. Now, while 10% of our residents will want to park their vehicle on our community sites, actually, a very small percentage of them use their vehicles. We're not in the business of taking someone's car away, so we have worked out a parking arrangement for those residents that want to have a car but don't use it very frequently. We've worked out a parking arrangement at four different communities that we have within 10 miles away. So the large portion of residents who want a vehicle but don't use it all the time will be able to park their vehicles off-site. At this community, we are going to offer valet service as well, so seven days a week we'll be able to shuttle our residents to and from their vehicles if they're parked off-site. The actual utilization rate is around 3% for those folks that use their vehicle on a daily basis, and we will have sufficient parking ability for those residents that actually use their vehicle every single day. Next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about parking usage for our staff. We are going to have roughly 110 employees parking onsite. Not parking onsite, 110 employees working on this project. They're working in three different shifts, and so we're estimating at the peak, we'll have 38 employees roughly that could need parking. But we have incorporated a TDM strategy, not only because it was recommended, but because it's the right thing to do. We've already incorporated that in other communities and have recognized up to a 75% public transportation utilization rate at other communities. At this community, we are going to incorporate financial incentives for carpooling. We are going to be offering a variety of bicycling, commuting incentives. You know, the infrastructure of Cupertino for bicycling is pretty incredible. We will have 64 Class 1 parking spaces for our employees. We will offer showers for employees who bike to work. In addition to that, on our service level, will be an additional 16 Class 2 bike parking spaces. We will also be offering e-bike subsidies for employees that wish to purchase a bike. In addition to those options mentioned, we'll be offering monthly public transportation transit vouchers. Being adjacent to Deansville College, there is a bus there on a regular basis and can cover the bus routes to commuter trains and other methods of employees to get to and from work. Lastly, we will be subsidizing Uber and Lyft if there's a rideshare need and incorporating the Hopper service for the Cupertino and Santa Clara employees. With all of these TDM strategies in place, we're expecting 10 or fewer parking spaces to be used by staff. Next slide. And lastly, visitors. We love to have folks visit our communities and have a number of folks that do visit us. But I want to talk about the data that we've pulled from our suburban RCFE communities to tell you when these folks actually visit. So for our communities that are roughly the same size of the Westport project, most of our visitors are coming at different times and different days of the week. Monday through Thursday is our lowest days of the week for visitors, and we usually see between 10 and 15 unique visits per day. It gets a little bit more on Fridays, where we have about 20% more, usually 15 to 20 unique visits per day. And then weekends, we have 20 or 30 usually for a community this size. Now, they're not coming at the same time, so naturally, they're going to come during mealtimes. And we're seeing 20% of those daily visitors coming for lunch, 30% usually come for the dinnertime, four to six hours. And then for those folks that come and go and take their family members to an off-site dinner, they come back, but only about 10% during that time. So therefore, we're looking at roughly, depending on the day of the week, anywhere from three to six needed parking spaces for visitors. So as you can see, assisted living parking needs are vastly different than any other sort of business. And even though it may seem like there aren't many parking spaces available with our TDM strategies and the actual parking needs of our residents and their visitors, we should be able to accommodate that.
Thanks, Terry. Just to finish up, there's a couple renderings here of the last few slides, just for the benefit of the public and the council. We take great pride in the architectural design of the buildings that we build, and so I just want to share these. You can see the level of detail, and I think this will be a great addition to the community. This rendering is actually the Stevens Creek and Mary Boulevard retail opportunity, as was designed in the original entitlement. And that's it. Thank you. Subject to any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone would like to start with questions? Yeah, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys being here. I also want to apologize for ending the meeting by accident. That was not the intention. I was sitting in the public lobby of an airport and had to catch a flight. There was no way. I had to pass security and get in there in time, so apologize for that. I just want to talk about perspective. And really, look, your company built the $25 billion Hudson Yards project. It generates $19 billion in GDP for New York City. You built Avery in San Francisco, Affordable Units in Pueblo, Del Sol in LA. You're moving into the data center business. You're a rich company. Your founder, Jorge, is a multi-billionaire worth almost $3 billion. You sit on $70 billion worth of property, doing almost $600 million in revenue per year. I understand you do need to make profit on this deal. I'm not saying you don't. What are the profit projections over the next 10 years on this project? What's the IRR for this project? What's the revenue per square feet? I ask this because, you know, we're being driven into a retail desert. We're losing parking spots in the suburban charm. We have a reduction of park fees for $4 million. You're asking your workers to be inconvenienced by your transit plans. The letters from Action Coalition doesn't help the cause. I'm not against the project. I really think we do need memory care and assisted living. I think that's an important piece. I just want the public to know, a $70 billion company is asking to reduce a few millions to make their number at a cost to our residents. Everything is a crisis. We will find out that the HCD projections were fabricated and falsely created with an unholy alliance of real estate developers, legislators lining their pockets for campaign donations, and the public who have only seen their housing policies increase the cost, their quality of life decrease, and their amenities subsidizing developer profits. Something is wrong here. I am for the concept of assisted living. Oakmont is a great operator. Related is a great builder, a good developer. But, you know, I'm just disappointed that we don't have a profit-sharing agreement with Related in this project, instead of us subsidizing the profits. I'm not going to vote at no on this project, but I'm just saying that something is wrong in this equation, and I want the public to know that we keep doing deals where the public loses, and those gains get put out to sovereign wealth funds, and they get put out to other folks. I'm a free-market capitalist. I'm not against this. I'm just saying that as a public official, we should be more careful with the stewardship of our money, the stewardship of our development, the use of our land. And, you know, $4 million in park fees is nothing for you guys, right? This will pass. This will probably pass. I'll probably vote for it. But please understand that perspective. And if you're a developer coming into the city, please understand that, you know, you're taking money from local people, you're taking money from taxpayers, you're taking money from retirees on in-lie fees. That's not how it's supposed to work. I'd love to go into profit arranging with Related. I mean, it'd be great. It'd be like working with Blackstone, Apollo Capital. They're all wonderful companies. But on the other end of the stick, we're the losers here as a city. Yes, we gain assisted living. It's great, you know? We can fill a narrative on the housing crisis and, you know, check off a box and make our legislators feel better that they did something. Nothing has changed. We lost retail revenue. We lost parking spaces. We got assisted living. Great. It's not going to change that. But it is a free market, and I think Oakmont will do a great job. I just want to have a, you know, better relationship with Related in the future. Let's go into a profit-sharing agreement. It'd be a lot better than being on the end of this end where we're losing money and giving up a lot. So that's my piece.
Thank you. You were on the road. Didn't want to interrupt, but this is a question time. Yeah. So anyone else has...
I want to know the profit. I want to know the IRR. That's my question. I want to know what your profit is for the 10-year period. What's the IRR? What are you working against that you can't fix $4 million? For the record, I do like you. You guys are very professional.
Look, I appreciate the question, and you and I have had conversations around this, right? These deals are individually financed, right? So there's a lot of rich, wealthy people in this country, and I'm not one of those people, right? I'm going to drive home to San Mateo to my rental, and so I, you know, try to put food on the table for my kids, just like everybody else. So I don't know that it's relevant how much, you know, money Steven Ross makes. What I will say is, you know, this company has been an incredible partner for 60 years across this country to develop affordable housing primarily, and that's why I started this conversation with that piece of information. And, you know, for this project specifically, you know, you say you're a free-market gentleman. We've taken this out to the market for the past three years to try to get this deal financed. And the market commands a certain return for these projects to get built, and we're not...
What's the average?
Well, it depends who, what investor, what level of capital, right? If you're talking about the senior lender, they require a certain level of return. If you're, you know, if you're talking about an equity investor, that's a different level of return. So everybody has a different threshold for what they're willing to make a profit and invest capital and put it at risk, right? And so this project, I think the proof of the fact that it's not, you know, that the fact that it's not financeable is proof that we're not hitting those targets that the market requires. And, you know, I said this at the Planning Commission meeting, there's nobody that wants to get this project moving more than us, right? Because we have real capital at risk in this deal, and delaying it over and over again, and now we're at, you know, three years, that doesn't do us any favors. So $4 million is a really important piece, right? Because that might be the amount that takes it to the point where we can actually get it financed.
Oh, we don't have financing available?
We don't have financing available. That's why, that's literally why we're here. You know, we spent the last three years trying to get this project financed, and we're unable to do so.
Okay. Just start with that.
I did. I thought I did. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So a question for staff regarding the recommended action. So it looks like the recommended action does include the TDM. Okay. And what is it saying regarding the retail?
Sure. And I can pull up the slide again, just so you can have that for the public and for yourself to read. Let me just get there.
Because it's looking like it has this option to increase retail in exchange for the parkland fees. Is that correct?
That is correct. And so I have it popped up. If you look at the second bullet, the condition you're referencing. So if, there's no in-between. So currently, proposing 4,000. The Planning Commission says, well, if you increase it to 8,000, your future obligation for the 13-unit parking lieu fees is waived, as well as a refund of the 3.69 million you've already paid.
Okay. And is that truly a staff recommendation?
No, this is Plan Commission.
Okay. So...
And to clarify, Vice Mayor, the staff's recommendation was not to, was to deny the waiver of the fees.
Right. Right. Okay. And that's, I was going through the attachments and trying to figure out where your original recommended action is. Or would we, if we wanted to go back to the original staff recommendation, would we need to alter the first resolution approving the addendum to the EIR, which has these two items in it?
So if the council's motion is to ignore, I don't know if ignore is the correct word, not go with the Plan Commission's recommendation and go with staff's original recommendation, I believe your motion would have to include not including these two conditions or eliminating one or both of these conditions.
Okay. And I'm hearing the developer talk about the TDM, so do you have some idea that that requirement is acceptable to the developer?
I believe it was. At the time, the developer did not object and hasn't objected to the TDM condition as subsequent to that hearing from the Plan Commission. I mean, that could be a question you can ask the developer directly if they continue to object or continue to accept that condition approval.
Okay. And then with regards to the park in lieu of fee, do you have any indication that there's a wish to increase the retail? So this is a requirement that if they wanted to, it's like an option. But do you have any sense that they're going to want that option?
You know, I think, again, that's a better question to ask directly to the applicant as to whether they've done any analysis. Nothing has been submitted directly to staff as to present as part of the staff report, but I believe possibly Ballant, or if you want to discuss if you had any understanding or...
All right. I've got a minute 40.
Sure. So just to be clear, there's no desire from our part. Any kind of incremental retail opportunity comes at cost to us, right? And so what the Planning Commission asked us to study, we did go back and preliminarily look at the opportunity to see if we could increase the ground floor... look at the opportunity to see if we could increase the ground floor retail. We are not able to increase it by an incremental 4,000 feet. What we are able to do potentially is increase it by about 2,500 square feet. And the way we would do that is to move those, move some uses back from the ground floor level back to level six. And so, we would actually be adding gross square footage to the building in order to accomplish that. And what we put forward was that cost would be approximately $3 million. And so, that's, that's the path that we could potentially look at to get to that point.
Okay, thank you. And what about the TDM part? Is that something that you're...
Yeah, I think, look, I think that the TDM, you know, as was, as was put forth in the motion, I think we're okay with. We do plan, as Terry laid out, to implement a program to facilitate and encourage folks to take public transit and minimize the onsite parking.
Okay, so it may be that item seven, the TDM program requirement is acceptable, and that eight, to have it fully at the 8,000 square feet would not be acceptable. Does that sound about right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Mohan.
I had a question for staff, as well as the applicant. Looking at the planning commission recommendations, what, what is the, where are we with the applicant's desires at this point? Where is, is there a gap between the planning commission recommendation and the applicant other than the 2,500 square feet versus 4,000 additional square feet?
Again, that, you know, the applicant hasn't let staff know in between, between now, between today and the planning commission, any serious disagreements with the conditions of approval. But again, as with the vice mayor's question, I would defer to a direct question to the applicant for that, if they still have any, any concerns with the planning commission's recommendation as stated in the conditions of approval.
If I could just add before Ballant gets up, I think the planning commission, the motion to add 4,000 square feet in addition in return for, say, the $4 million in park fees, which would be the amount that's already been paid and about the amount for the 13 new units, I think that sort of came up late in the discussion, and the 4,000 was largely based on that there's 4,000 already proposed. So, it was essentially doubling the retail that was onsite. I believe in all that Ballant talked, but I think the 4,000 square feet sounds like something that's pretty much undoable, but I think that they could do something in the neighborhood of 2,500 square feet maximum. And as you already said, you'd be looking for like a $3 million offset for that, so...
So, do I understand that that's acceptable to the applicant?
I think our, you know, what was asked of us during the planning commission meeting, or at least what we walked away with, was a voluntary, voluntary approach for us to look at the possibility to do something with additional retail. We went back and did some preliminary studies internally to see what was feasible, and that's how the 2,500 square feet was, was, we came upon that number. So, I think in terms of a voluntary, you know, condition, if you will, the way that the planning commission proposed it would allow us to continue to look at it in more detail. But again, I just wanted, I want to stress the point that the addition of retail comes with significant expense, and the only way that we can do that is with a, with a reduction that, in that amount of the $3 million.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Mostly to the applicant, so I'm sorry, Ballant, you get to do a lot of squats today. If I could have you come up again. So, first of all, thank you for the conversation that we had. It was after the planning commission meeting, which I watched a couple of times in order to get a stronger sense of sort of where the commission was at and what they were aiming for. So, it felt like you'd already gone through a lot of conversation with your own folks as to what was possible, what wasn't. And it sounded like that the maximum end of the square footage of additional retail that you get was about 2,500 square feet. Doesn't sound like any of that has changed. But if we were to try to memorialize that in a resolution today, would it be more helpful for you to make something that's viable to go all the way to that 2,500 square foot? Or would a sliding scale be more helpful to you as a matter of flexibility?
I think that, you know, the, the more flexibility that exists within the parameters, the more likely that we can accommodate something. I do think, you know, again, if the condition is made on a voluntary basis, and I keep stressing that because I think that the condition and the contingency on our part is the, is obviously the flow of dollars to make that possible. But I think we can achieve the 2,500 square feet, but a lot more needs to be studied, right? With all the mechanical systems that's set around the ground floor. So, certainly flexibility would be, would be ideal.
Got it. And would something in the ballpark of like, you know, a million dollars of in lieu fees per 1,000 square feet of retail be in the right ballpark for you?
I think, I think the number that we, you know, that we put forward was, was the $3 million for the 2,500 square feet. So, I think if we were going to make it a sliding scale, it should just be prorata-based.
Pure prorata?
Yeah.
Okay. There was also a lot of discussion at the, the planning commission about sort of the nature of the retail and wanting to create an active space, so I'm happy to hear you talking about wanting to focus it around the park that's in the middle of the space. You know, what, what kinds of retailers would you hope to tenant in that area?
So, I think there's a, there's a restriction already within the code and entitlement in terms of what types of tenants are allowed in this particular project. But putting that aside, if you look at, you know, historically, what types of, types of tenants that Related puts in its buildings, we look to, again, to activate and create sort of a curated retail experience. So, we typically do a lot of F&amp;B type of retail in our, in our, in our developments. And even though in some instances it might be more financially accretive to go with a tenant, for example, like a, you know, I'm just, a pharmacy provider, for example, not to use a particular one, that's a highly credited tenant, right? We typically shy away from those because they don't create that type of environment. So, we try to work with our retail tenants to create sort of an exciting placemaking type of environment.
Got it. So, you're actively looking for synergy, and just for the sake of everybody's understanding, F&amp;B is food and beverage.
Food and beverage, yes, yes, thank you.
Before we get, get lost in acronyms. So, if we were to include a, a condition that whatever retail is there is, is to be considered a, a public accommodation or facility, as would otherwise be defined in the Health and Safety Code, would that be a problem for you?
Yeah, I think, I think whatever the retail that's allowed onsite currently, I think if that's, you know, if that was maintained for, for the incremental additional square footage, that would be okay.
Okay, all right, cool. And then it sounded like you had some additional issues with having to essentially reconfigure things at level six of the building in order to be able to make all of this work. So, what, what additional direction, if any, would you need in order to memorialize that?
So, if we went down the path of actually increasing the retail, we would have to move some uses back upstairs to level six. And so, the, the current application has us reducing or increasing, rather, the number, amount of setbacks on level six. We would need to further reduce those setbacks in order to, you know, move some of those uses upstairs. And I don't know if it's a one-for-one in terms of the square footage, just because of how things lay out, but, but I, I know that the original entitlement was just shy of 200,000 gross square feet. I think the current application is for 195,000. So, whatever it would be, it would be less than the original entitlement of 199.5 or whatever it was.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I will start with some background information. The Oak Shopping Mall originally had how many square foot of retail? Just roughly?
I believe it was 70, between 70 and 25,000 square feet.
75,000 square foot? And then the previously approved was already cutting it to 17,600 square foot?
The total amount was 20,000, but 17,600 in this.
Oh, 20,000. And, yeah, and then at the time, I think, I appreciate that Related also worked with the council. Initially, you was going to reduce more, and then you squeezed in 500 square feet more of retail. But this version will reduce it to 4,000 square foot. But we all still have retail in the BMR building, right? So, how much is the, in the BMR building?
I believe it's 2,600.
2,600.
2,600, yeah.
So, altogether, we have, 2,600, we have like 60, 6,600 square foot together. And then if they are arranged nicely, we still have a good amount, not as good as before. And so, the, so I understand with the parkland fee, but I thought the council approved the traffic impact fees also, so does that not apply to this project?
They do. So, the, the applicant has paid all the, all the mitigation fees that they needed to pay already, including the traffic mitigation.
So, that has already been paid?
Correct.
And the staff recommendation does not include the 4 million fee waiver requested?
The original recommendation that we brought to planning commission was to not approve the fee waiver. Planning commission came up with the two conditions that included...
Yeah, so the option one of planning commission does not include the 4 million fee waiver. And option two is the fee waiver in exchange for an increase of retail. Yeah, just want to clarify that. And then the draft resolution that's in the agenda does not include the $4 million fee waiver, but I see it does include the, the option two.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so the draft resolution is sort of the planning commission option one and two together?
Correct. So, staff's recommendation today is to go with planning commission's recommendation.
And that also, I think the draft resolution also include the TDM?
Correct.
And, but I think it, about the 19 extra parking space is not included in the, it's not really mentioned in the conditions of approval, right? But it's a kind of a, not promise.
It is.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I just want to clarify.
Condition number five specifically.
Oh, so it is in there already?
Yeah, because that was part of a staff's, I think, it was part of staff's original recommendation.
Okay, okay. Then I have a question for the, can, applicant, is, so how much would be the monthly rent for the different type of units that would be here?
We, you know, we still need to spend some time figuring the, the actual rent out as we get closer to opening. But, so the, the building will have studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Studios, and again, please don't hold me to these numbers because we're pretty far out, right? But I could just use our examples from San Francisco and from Santa Clara. Studios somewhere in the 6, $7,000 range is where they typically start. One bedrooms are somewhere in the 8,000-plus range, sort of entry level, and two bedrooms are in the 12, $13,000 range to begin with.
So, these are assisted living units?
That's right.
Okay, and memory care units?
Memory care units are probably somewhere around 10,000.
And then this project still includes 35 units of memory care?
That's right.
And that's not, that's in addition to the 300, 136 units?
That's correct.
Right? Yeah. Because that's the units we can count for housing element.
That's right, yeah.
So, 35 units is extra.
Yeah, no kitchens in those units, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And then you, in the, you will, sorry. Oh, and so you will, you, you were, you are still considering potentially repositioning the current 400 square foot of retail likely closer together to the park area?
Yeah, yeah, the 4,000 feet, we're, we're looking at that to orient it along the park, the interior park. I think that the, so right now, we have it split into two sections, roughly 1,000 feet on, on the Stevens Creek Boulevard and Mary Ave side, and then the balance of the 3,000 on the other side. That 3,000 is what we're looking at sort of re-orienting. The 1,000 square foot, and again, these are approximate, approximations of the square footages, but in aggregate will lead to the 4,000. That 1,000 square foot space on Mary Ave and Stevens Creek Boulevard, we think that's an important location for the benefit...
So, that will stay?
That will stay, for the benefit of folks coming over from Deans, for the senior center, folks coming from the park. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the community that, that is actually an important location.
So, 3,000, that might be real, but that does not need to be in the conditions of approval, right? It will be...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I, I think, you know, we're, we're studying that based on how things get laid out on the ground floor. We, you know, we need to, we need to get some more planning done in terms of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing uses that are on that side as we, you know, once we get hopefully the approval to move forward with the project, we can actually commence the redesign effort on our side.
Okay, thank you so much. I think my time is up. Vice Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Quick question. So, there's 2,600 square feet, a question for staff of, of retail in Building Two, the 48 senior units. Would you happen to know how much of that has actually been leased?
None of it has been leased yet.
Okay, and it opened a year ago?
Approximately, correct.
Okay. And then the, there's a, we've gotten a number of emails regarding the parking issue for that building as well, which makes it harder for people to go to the retail. And then the proposal or the suggestion from the developers to put additional retail on the, on the backside, the Mary Avenue side? Is that correct?
I, I don't think, I think, I think what...
The park side. It's just a, oh, that's okay, sorry.
I think with the applicant, correct me if I'm wrong, Ballant, I think with the applicant is stating that they're going to put the retail facing the inside of the park, but not necessarily along, fate, along the Mary Avenue portion, the single portion. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, we're looking at that, right? There's, there's been some interest from the city council members that we've spoken to, as well as planning commissioners, that the retail should really be located around the park. That's in contrast to the heart of the city, you know, designation, which really wants retail on, on Stevens Creek Boulevard. So, we, we were trying to balance those two things, and I think if the, if the interest of the city is really to, to activate that park, then we're looking at making that feasible.
Wow, okay. So, I, I think you're building a challenge, especially considering that you know that the retail next door, which is Stevens Creek facing, it, no one's, no one's leasing that space, it's been, been here.
That's right.
Okay, I'll make my comments about, about that request after we go to public comment and we come back.
Okay, so let's go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have approximately seven requests to speak from in Community Hall. I see two requests to speak virtually, so that brings us to 27 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we'll begin with Ruben Galvin, followed by Nick, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Ruben? Okay, I do not see Ruben. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. My name is Nick, and I've been a Cupertino resident in the Westport area for the past eight years. The first seven years, I stayed in the Glenbrook Apartments just across the street from Westport, and more recently, I moved into one of the townhomes that was built in the first phase of this development. So, I know and love this corner of Cupertino quite a lot. Tonight, I'd like to speak in strong support of the proposed memory care facility and the staff's original recommendation of 4,000 square feet of retail, but against... but against the planning commission's proposal to give up the parkland fee in exchange for more retail because the commission's proposal doesn't include the parking to support it. As many of others have already said, Cupertino desperately needs senior housing, and this proposal offers a rare opportunity to meet that need in a great location, near Memorial Park and the Senior Center, and I think we should build it. But giving up the park fee and trying to squeeze in more retail will not only cost Cupertino millions of dollars that we've already collected, but it will create issues for those of us living in the Westport community. As you know, when you add retail without sufficient parking, the retail itself will either fail to attract vendors and the buildings will sit empty, or if it does succeed, it'll overflow our community with people looking for parking that doesn't exist. I'm excited about how this project will help Westport become a vibrant gathering space for Cupertino. When you consider the roughly two thousand square feet of retail that's already on the ground floor of the senior living building and add the four thousand square feet that was originally proposed, I think that this will enable a sense of placemaking for our community, and it will also fit the size and space that we have available. So please, don't give back the millions of dollars. Don't go against your own parking guidelines and create a potential problem for Westport by adding that retail without sufficient parking. And then please, of course, approve the senior housing that we all need. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick, and I see Ruben Galvan now. Welcome, Ruben.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members. My name is Ruben Galvan. I'm a proud representative of the NorCal Carpenters Union, Local 405. I'm here to speak about the importance of including fair labor standards in the Westport Building Number One, Cupertino Project, and in all future development across our city. Fair labor standards means paying area standard wages, providing quality healthcare, and investing in state-certified apprenticeship programs. These standards ensure safe job sites, high-quality construction, and real career opportunities for local workers. As you consider waiving fees, it's only fair that the jobs created reflect the values of this community. If the city is helping the developer to develop, the developer should commit to fair labor practices. But this isn't just about one project. Fair labor standards should not only apply to public projects, they should apply to all projects, public or private. This needs to be the rule, not the exception. The development has also addresses another urgent need for assisted living options for our seniors. Many longtime residents that want to stay here in Cupertino close to their families as they deserve dignity and respect, and also workers building these homes deserve dignity on the job. If we're serious about equity, opportunity, and accountability, we need to make sure the development at Westport, Cupertino Building One, project reflect those values. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Richard Adler, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I have been following Westport when it was the Oaks years ago. Now my niece has a one-year-old, one-month-old baby. Goes along, I did attend the planning commission meeting. I think that there was a very good discussion of all the different issues involved in this project. This is like the last one-third of this property. We probably want to get something built there. I am a bit sensitive about this because we lost my husband's mother in January. She had full-blown Alzheimer's and had had it for probably fifteen years. The family fought, they kept her at home in Oregon through extenuating. If you want to see what families go through to take care of their seniors, we lived it. I, my family paid fifty-four thousand dollars for the six months that my mother-in-law was in assisted care, I mean, memory care, and she had her own bedroom and bathroom, excellent facility in Corvallis. We have no complaints. But when you talk about the toll of what this takes on a family, and my husband went up there repeatedly to help, you need to have twenty-four-hour access to the family. My, my brother-in-law, you talk about a saint, he was there at two AM in the morning, and he's in his seventies. This is the type of thing that, believe me, if I was paying eight and a half thousand dollars per month and there was no parking place for the family at three o'clock in the morning, I would move my relative. You have to have a level of decency. HCD is a vulture. I will never, I'm sorry, this is my opinion of them, and this is our city. We have to make sure that the living standards of what happens in this city are to our liking. Now, I understand that this, I, I fully understand what you have when you have assisted care. My aunt was in Dominican Oaks in Santa Cruz, which is a lovely Catholic facility, and my girlfriend and her father were at Cupertino Chateau for two years. She is now in assisted care in Santa Clara. But I, I think we, I think going off of what the planning commission wanted, they worked toward a goal. We need to have parkland fees paid, but we need retail. And the parking, believe me, it is cheap, cheap, cheap if you cannot provide parking and the buses don't go at two AM. The Santa Clara facility, you don't have women riding the bus to clean the floor at two AM. Thank you.
Next, we have Richard Adler, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Richard.
I have some slides. Can we get those up?
Yes, you should see them shortly.
So I'm Richard Adler, I'm a twenty-six-year resident of the city of Cupertino. I'm also the Chair of Age Friendly Cupertino, which was established in two thousand eighteen with support from the then-city council. And we advocate for making Cupertino a more age-friendly community. And I want to just provide some basic facts about demographics and how the demographics of Cupertino are changing in some very substantial ways. We look at the population, Cupertino's older population. Two thousand fifteen, Cupertino had approximately twelve percent of its total population over age sixty-five, about seventy-two hundred. Today, that population is about fifteen percent of the population, about eighty-five hundred people. And by twenty thirty-five, older adults will be fully twenty percent of the city's population, or approximately fourteen thousand four, I'm sorry, eleven thousand four hundred seniors, making this the fastest-growing part of the population of the city. And particularly the over seventy-five population, which is the key demographic with needs for assisted living, will double from about five point five percent to ten percent. And this next graph, if you're going to remember one thing about Cupertino, it's this next graph, shows how dramatically the composition of the population of the city is changing in, in terms of age. A decade ago, there were almost twice as many people in Cupertino under the age of eighteen as there were residents over sixty-five. Sometime in the next two or three years, those numbers are going to be equal, and by twenty twenty, twenty thirty-five, the number of seniors in our community will be substantially larger than the younger population. And yet, our housing stock really has not changed. When you think of how we think of the city, it's, housing is for families and for young people, and that is changing. If we can look at the next slide, then not only we're going to have more older people, and the reason is that people are living longer, which is a cause for celebration, but one consequence of this is that the population ages. More people will need care in their later years. Well, just three percent of those in sixty-five to sixty-eight need assisted living. By the time you get to eighty, which is the target age, more than fifty percent of those will need care, and by the time you get to ninety, it's over three-quarters. And so we now have two hundred and twenty-one units of assisted living in Cupertino. You know, that's a good thing. Westport alone will add a hundred and thirty-six, so fifty percent increase. And as the representative from Oakmont said, we are really deficient. And finally, we look at the prevalence of Alzheimer's in Cupertino's population. That is also going to be increasing. As Cupertino's population increases from eighty-four hundred in two thousand twenty-five to eleven thousand, the number of residents needing Alzheimer's care will increase as well, and we need more accommodations for them. Thank you.
Next, we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
And I believe you have some slides for me?
Yes. Okay, she should show momentarily.
Good evening. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a Cupertino resident and also President of the Senior Center Advisory Council. I am here to urge you to approve this project without opposing additional constraints. Five years ago, as a member of the Age Friendly Task Force, I went to all of the meetings for this Westport project. Yes, I was there on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty, when this project was approved at four AM in the morning. The needs of the senior community that I represent haven't changed. Next slide. Furthermore, only limited senior-friendly housing has built in those five years. Let's look at the statistics. Nearly one-third of households in Cupertino have a resident sixty-plus. The most vulnerable populations are the one-person households and those over the age of seventy-five. Why do we need this project? Next slide. Our senior, our seniors need this type of housing. Loss of a driver's license is a major deterrent to aging in place in a single-family home, particularly when there's only one person. We know that social isolation is one of the major health risks for this population. Dementia is another risk. Let's look at what's available in Cupertino, less than one hundred, eight hundred units. There are two continuing care residential communities, but these require substantial buy-in. Chateau Cupertino does not have the full continuum of care. BMR has been added with a veranda and more recently, Westport Senior Apartments, but no market-rate rental units have been added. This is an ideal location, next to the Senior Center, Memorial Park, and Deansa, as well as public transportation. This project is an opportunity to meet community needs that extend beyond seniors. Retail space for food establishments is critical in this location. We lost Tobi's, Coffee Society, Togo's, Jamba Juice, an ice cream shop, and an Indian restaurant. The proposed bistro at Mary and Stevens Creek is essential to creating a community gathering place, not just for seniors, but also Deansa students and park users. This project has taken too much time to get approvals. I urge you to unanimously approve it tonight. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jean, and now we will go to Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Sorry, you're off because I have my last name, right? Hello. I do appreciate Councilmember Wong stating what he stated in the beginning. I think there's things there that a lot of people need to listen to. I appreciate Councilmember Fruance's questions about how this might be formed to work for the applicant. And I'm looking forward to Vice Mayor's questions after the public speaking. I, as too, attended remotely the planning commission meeting, and I have to say, I'm a bit disappointed that this didn't come back more to match what they were asked to do. I, yeah, I'll just state it that way. Placemaking was a big driver for what planning commission, at least I saw what planning commission and people who spoke at planning commission are looking for. It was something that was promised by Turcini's when this whole thing started, and it just keeps getting dwindled away. I, in this location, I think you scrapped the heart of the city because it's too close, in my opinion, to a freeway entrance. And it, it doesn't seem like a place where people are going to park on the street. They can't. So they have to find parking anyway. They can go within in a nicer way. And many people will acknowledge that. At Main Street, what was supposed to be the wide sidewalk to bring driver, walkers and riders in to retail is not used that way at all. It's the back of the House of Restaurants with garbage and doors open and likely rats going in. It's not a good scene, so that isn't, and that was the location to have something like that, but it didn't, wasn't designed right by Sand Hill, so, and it's not used right. So I believe it's very important to make the placemaking thing happen and around the park, and as much retail as possible. And if sixty-five hundred is all they're willing to do, hold them to it. I, you know, I heard that the, oh yeah, we can look into that. It sounded pretty positive, but when they were talking about the eight thousand square feet total. It's just this back and forth, back and forth. And as far as the accommodations for getting workers to have ways to work other than parking, it's ludicrous to think a twenty-four-hour-a-day facility will be able to accommodate all their employees bicycling, and it, it doesn't seem realistic to me. It just sounds like it's.
Lisa, that is your time. And now we move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have Rhoda Frye, followed by San Ralph, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Sina Linskog. Sina Linskog, welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening again. I, I don't question the validity of the project. Very much appreciate Richard Adler's comments. There's a couple of things that came, have been coming to my mind. One is, I'm definitely in favor of having skilled and trained labor on our projects. That means that they're going to get better built, and that's important. The other thing regarding the park fees, you know, if you're talking about giving away, let's say, a million dollars for a park fee, you would have to get a hundred million dollars in retail sales to make that up. So it's, that's a lot of money that you're going to have to sell in goods to get that sales tax revenue. On the other hand, the retail is about having a certain quality of life. And I, I used to walk over to the Oaks and, and of course, there's nothing there to walk to anymore. So we really do need to get some sort of quality of life in our city. And the other thing that occurred to me with respect to park fees, if I were to build a house in the city, and, you know, I had a nice, let's say, ten thousand square foot lot, and I said, hey, you know, city, I've, I've built a playground in my backyard for my children, I don't want to pay a park fee. I, I don't think that the city would waive that fee. So it, it just, I, I just haven't, it just doesn't seem fair for them not to pay the park fee. At the same time, it is a very heavy lift at the beginning of a project to have to pay all these fees upfront, especially because before they've started, you know, they've, they've actually started their business, gotten off the ground. And so if there is any possibility that fees could be paid on the back end, and, you know, within a certain number of years that they've been established, and Councilmember Wong was somewhat alluding to that about, you know, profit sharing, maybe this would be a way to mitigate the fees. So that's, those are my random thoughts, and also thank, thanks to Lisa Warren also for her comments. You know, we've been in this place too many times. We get a project going, the project has been approved by, by everybody, and then at the, at the last minute, it erodes. And, and it's disappointing. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, we have San Ralph. Welcome, San. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Chow and Councilmembers. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission, but speaking on behalf of myself only as a resident today. I'd like to provide you some perspectives for your consideration. As the commissioners deliberated this, speaking for myself, I think one striking observation for me was that the applicant believed that the primary problem going into this was the lack of parking. And I believe the commissioners, including myself, considered the lack of retail as one of the primary problems. And so when we probed on this, I think one of the things that was clear was the lack of, still a lack of community noticing to the broader neighborhoods. And I think this is another reminder of our CWP on community noticing that really needs to reach out more broadly. The Oaks was a shopping center that served the entire West Side and the Garden Gate community. And noticing just the Westport community does not get balanced feedback on the project. And so had we done a noticing that really drew in the broader Cupertino community, you would have had overwhelming reactions about saving retail as best as we can. So I do want to point that out. The second thing is, I believe staff and applicant have clarified, the Westport Senior Living project, I believe, is over thirty-three parking spots. I heard twenty-six today, so I would urge you to probe on the difference. When I've talked to the applicant before, I've heard the number thirty-three for Westport Senior Living and six for Taylor Morrison Townhomes, for a total of thirty-nine. So I'd urge you to make sure there's no discrepancies and these numbers don't shrink from the time they're heard at Planning Commission to the time they come to City Council. So the number for Westport Senior Living is thirty-three and six for Taylor Morrison. The other thing I want to make sure that we don't lose track of is, staff report coming into Planning Commission required an additional nineteen parking spaces. So I believe the total parking the applicant was required to provide at the surface level was ninety-three, for a total of ninety-three parking, of which thirty-nine would be for Building Two and the Taylor Morrison. So just want to make sure that these numbers don't shrink as they go from one stage to the other. And as we deliberated on this, my primary consideration was how do we maximize the retail? Because if you play devil's advocate, this project doesn't pencil out. The next project that comes is even less likely to have retail and probably more likely to have higher density. And if I wear the hat of the neighborhood, Hanson Avenue, Mary Avenue, and so on, I think residents would support a medium-density project like this one with the occupants being not as much of a burden on the community because they're not as mobile, but still getting the retail they can. Finally, I just want to add, I'm close to the Wellness Center, and staff definitely from the Wellness Center occupy the Bonavista Park. So that is a burden on the park, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Sima Linska. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and councilmembers and city manager. My name is Connie Cunningham, self-only, thirty-eight-year resident and Chair currently of the Housing Commission. I am a senior. I urge the council to approve Agenda Item eighteen tonight. I spoke five years ago when this project was approved. It is critical to have this housing for our city for seniors. Westport is providing market-rate assisted living housing that is very much needed. Not only does it provide new homes for seniors within city limits, it will provide for the city's financial health. Many Cupertino seniors live in homes they can sell or rent. Then they would be able to move to an assisted living location in Cupertino, like this one. By selling, renting to another person, they are providing a home for a new family and neighbor to Cupertino. This new owner-renter will add to the use of businesses in Cupertino, attend its schools, and add to neighborhood vitality. The seniors will continue to visit businesses and friends. New sales taxes and/or property taxes are important for the city's finances. Number two, seniors will be living near their families, friends, doctors, restaurants, Deansa College, the Senior Center, and other amenities. This is important to them and to the other residents of the city because it provides interconnectedness among generations. For transportation, although I too regret the loss of retail in the area, VTA bus service, SV hopper service, and concierge service provided by the new facility will make it possible for residents to visit amenities a little farther away along Stevens Creek Boulevard and Deansa Boulevard. An example of this interconnectedness from my own experience. My own dear mother, Bonnie, passed away two months ago at the age of ninety-six and three-quarters, almost ninety-seven. Prior to her passing, she had a fun and loving experience with an assisted living community in her city. She sold her home that allowed a new family to move into her former neighborhood. That family remained friends with her the rest of her life. She then moved to an assisted living community only a seven-minute drive from her former home. She was able to worship with her beloved church family of fifty-three years and made many new friends at the assisted living community. When she passed away, the celebration of life included dozens of lifelong friends and new friends. You make new friends, you keep the old. One is silver and the other gold. I urge the City Council to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the Westport modification. Thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you, Connie. And next, we have Sima Linska. Welcome, Sima.
Hi there. Yeah, so I want to echo a little bit of what my fellow Planning Commissioner said. I'm also on the Planning Commission, and I'm speaking as a resident today. I've spent a fair amount of time talking to the developer. And we know that, and I think he used a word that I think we can't forget. He said, "This is voluntary." And I think that's an important word to keep in mind. They are not required to give us more retail. They are doing it voluntarily. They're trying to be good citizens and good residents of the city. And he also mentioned they're going to be here for long term. So I think it's important for us to recognize that. They are a business, as it's been brought up several times. They do need to make this pencil out. They still need to go get the funding for this project. And I think we have explained to them what matters to us and what's important to us and what we need. And they've tried to be accommodating. They've tried to be flexible. They've gone back and redesigned or offered to redesign their project to meet our needs voluntarily. So I think, you know, let's work with them. Let's partner with them. They're telling us what they can or cannot do, and we're telling them what's important to us, and they're trying to meet us in the middle. If they can do the twenty-five-hundred-square-feet additional retail in exchange for three million dollars in new park fees refund, that sounds like a good deal for me. As Santosh Rao mentioned earlier, there's a lot of residents who would like to see retail. We've heard it over and over and over again. So please, listen to the community, listen to what they're asking for. They want retail in this, and they want placemaking, and that is something that's important to them. So let's make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sima. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. So let's bring it back. I think I'll just make the motion to adopt the staff recommendation or recommended action on the agenda which include Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, approving the First Amendment to the EIR and approving the Development Permit Amendment. And Number Two, adopt Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero-two-eight, approving the Architecture and State Approval Permit. I will have the motion, and then in case we have any potential friendly amendment, we can consider that. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. But first, I'd like to make a comment. Thank you for all the public comments that I think, especially the one that we really have not built market-rate senior housing for a while. That reminded me, I looked up, the last time we had a senior housing proposed was Main Street. And their first project was approved in 2008, which is supposed to have one hundred sixty units of market-rate senior housing, one hundred forty-five thousand square foot of fitness club, one hundred fifty thousand square foot of retail space, and a hundred thousand square foot of office space and a hundred and fifty-room of hotel. Very unfortunate, we didn't get those senior housing. They have been turned into market-rate, supposed to be studio units. And we didn't get the fitness club either. Instead, we have tripled, three times the office space as proposed. So I really appreciate that we finally will have a really nice senior housing project, even though it's at the high end. I think a lot of people likely can even afford, even if they rent out their currency in a single-family home. But it's still a much-needed, feel much-needed housing needs and the memory care units. So I really appreciate the applicant to always be open to work with the city and take in the concerns of the residents and really be open to always trying to improve your project. I'm a little unsure what the current draft resolution does still include the second option from Planning Commission that would, the city would part with four million or possibly potentially three million dollars of parkland impact fee for twenty-five-hundred square feet. I think the applicant is able to do that. But I'm not sure if the council think that's worth the investment to get this extra retail. So I'm still not sure about that. Yeah, anyone who would like to comment? Vice Mayor?
Sure, thank you. So currently, we have twenty-six hundred square feet of retail, which has not been leased. Does anyone have any idea for why they haven't been able to lease that space? Can you think of anything that would be contributing to it?
I haven't heard anything, and I'm hesitant to answer as to the exact reasons why or my opinions why.
Okay, okay. So I'm concerned about adding more retail to this location with this particular situation. Also, the idea of adding retail, which is kind of like courtyard-facing, concerns me because people driving by the project aren't going to be seeing any signage or know that that retail exists there. So that, I'm worried about its viability. And then when you're adding these, if you were to add extra retail, this twenty-five-hundred square feet, how much parking is that going to be needing to have added to the project? Where would people park for that?
Great question. You know, one of the conditions, the conditions of approval from the Planning Commission didn't require further parking beyond, you know, if they added that four thousand square feet. So even that twenty-five-hundred, if you figure, you know, twenty-five-hundred divided by one to two-fifty is your standard commercial threshold. So you're looking at ten spaces, so twenty further. Am I off correct? You know, four thousand is twenty.
Okay, so we have a situation where there's a struggling parking, difficulty filling the retail that's currently there. And, you know, we have members of the public that are wanting to have the retail. But I think that if this project were to be very successful for the retail component, it needed to be designed for that to happen. And we're also looking at having brand-new construction. You're going to have a beautiful building, probably going to charge a lot to lease those spaces, I would assume, unless you plan on subsidizing any retail tenants. Is that, would that be something you'd be willing to do?
Can you guys hear me? No, I appreciate the comments. I don't disagree with anything you said. I think, you know, the Jason property has struggled to lease that retail. It's unclear why. And, you know, your points about the signage, that is something that we've talked a lot about and I think something that, you know, we need to consider as we look at how that space is laid out. In terms of how the retail is used at least, you know, again, it'd be out to the market as a market-rate opportunity, right? So we would look to find tenants that are willing to pay a market rate to get into the space. And so, you know, it could potentially pose a challenge if there is an increase in the retail. That's certainly true.
So you showed us this beautiful image of the interior of the retail space. Is that something that you would be building out? Or is that the responsibility of a tenant?
Typically, the tenant will build out the space. The reason that that particular space was rendered is because, and I'll just use our other projects in Santa Clara as an example. We also have a retail space there that's built out, that we built out ourselves. And the hope is that we will bring in a tenant. To the extent that we're unable to lease that space, our partner, Oakmont, will actually operate the space so that it's a second venue that's still publicly available to people because it's true third-party retail. But again, we need to find a partner there that's willing to come in as a third-party tenant. And just by way of example, we haven't found that person yet in that location.
Thank you. And so I did tour Alor before knowing that Oakmont was going to have this site. The upper-floor units were around seventeen thousand a month. So they really, beautiful views, but they are definitely pricey. And I saw the downstairs retail that you planned. It was a very, very beautiful building, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So personally, I think the four-million-dollar parkland fee is very valuable to us. And I'm concerned that the retail, as much as we want it, that we might be creating a challenge for the developer to have it be leased. So I'm torn between these two items.
Anyone else? Councilmember Frue?
If you'd like to go to first, Councilmember Mohan, you're welcome to.
Yeah, so the real challenge is, do we want retail? Or are we willing to pay a price for the additional retail? That has been discussed. And one of the residents talked about a quality of life aspect. And I think this really is not so much a financial decision for the city because it is giving back close to four million dollars, but really a quality of life in terms of retail, especially for that community, which, given the demographics, would need retail. I think the four thousand square feet that everyone has agreed to for now, I think is a cafe or a coffee shop. And that's been sort of talked about. And I'm assuming that's still the case.
Yes, that's correct. Not for the entirety of the four thousand feet, but for a portion, certainly.
Right. So that's the choice we have. Do we want retail? Do we want more retail than the one that's been provided in the original plan? Or do we want to ask for retail and give up our park and lieu funds? Because all the other issues have pretty much been resolved. The TDM, I think, is important, and I heard the applicant mention it. And I know the Planning Commission included it in their recommendation. So that's really not an issue. The parking is an issue for not just Westport, that entire neighborhood. We've had concerns about Mary Avenue with the new development coming up further down on Mary Avenue. So I think parking has to be addressed separately. In any case, we... In any case, I, we don't have the, uh, the right to demand more parking. I mean, the housing laws, uh, clearly state that. So I think parking has to be considered, uh, more holistically for that whole neighborhood and that's an entirely different, uh, matter and does not, should not, uh, uh, be an issue in, in, in today's decision. So, so really, I, I think the, the community wants retail, the applicant is willing to meet us halfway, not four thousand additional square feet, but twenty-five-hundred square feet. And in return, we, we pay them, we refund the money that's already been paid as part of the, uh, Park and Lou fund. So that's really the, the decision we are all grappling with.
Uh, councilmember Fuhr and then councilmember Wong.
So I think councilmember Mohan did a, a pretty good job of describing sort of the trade-off here of, of what people are interested in and why. And I watched the, the planning commission go through that at quite some length and it was really interesting to watch them coalesce around what, what it was that they thought that they wanted and that the community wanted. And, and I would really like to be able to see us try to honor what they managed to, to achieve in that meeting that was a surprising consensus. What I will say is that in the current resolution, I'm not convinced that the language that's there is particularly operative. So I spent some time with the city attorney today and I want to thank you for having spent that time with me, um, to try to come up with language that would render it operative so that we can at least have a discussion of whether this is something that we want to do. Um, and I will send that to the city clerk so that she can distribute it to the rest of council as an amended motion for what the, the mayor put forward. Um, one of the things I will say, having run stores for nearly a decade, is that if you've just got one retail space that's twenty-six hundred square feet in the middle of nowhere next to an active construction site, I don't think it's a giant shock that it's not tenanted. Um, it needs a context and we can help it have that context. Um, you know, I, I would agree today with, with Lisa Warren on the topic of, you know, what works well and what doesn't work well at Main Street and why. And that is that it has become a sort of inward-facing space and that is the direction that a lot of, of this type of retail is going and it's different from what our, our older heart of the city standards would ordinarily require. So I think it's important that we try to activate this interior space. That means having other retail tenants in proximity. That really matters when you're, when you are a retailer. Um, so I'm going to send this, this potential amendment to the city clerk and hopefully it can be accepted and we can discuss it.
Hey, um, councilmember Wong, would you like to...
Yeah. Actually, I want to ask a quick question to our assistant, uh, our acting city manager. What's the status for our Park and Lou fee fund?
Thank you, councilmember Wong. So the, the city currently has about thirteen million in, in our Park and Lou fund. Um, and you know, any decision that council comes up with today could affect that fund, um, obviously, um, which, you know, just something to consider is if the city will be looking at or considering, um, for example, purchasing any property with the fund with, um, with this kind of parkland, um, use. Um, that's something just to consider, but currently we have about thirteen million.
Okay. Uh, just a question in general to, uh, the, uh, planning team. Uh, will we be requiring a developer agreement?
At present, there's no requirement for a development agreement, um, which can be a pretty involved process. It would typically, and after it would be drafted, it would have to go to planning commission, come back to the city council for approval. Um, so that would certainly add a time factor. That would be something that I certainly want to inquire of the applicant, how receptive they would be to going through that process.
Most people don't like it, but yeah. It took three years to get to this point. What happens if there's no financing? This is to the applicant, even with this plan?
Um, that's a great question.
Do you sell it? Do you go somewhere else? Do we flip it again?
You know, I, I don't know. We're, we're gonna, um, we think that the plan that we put forward is financeable. Um, obviously, you know, I brought up a couple of things, uh, namely the tariff environment that we're in that is really difficult to understand what the impact of that will be. Um, once we hopefully get through the city process, our, our next step is to, you know, go through the design process and then start pricing out the job and going out to the market and getting bids for what that will cost. Um, and at the same time, finding out what the, the financial costs are to get debt and equity for the project. Um, so, you know, that can, that can take some time and obviously as we go through that process, um, the, the financial markets can, can shift and adjust as well. So I, I don't, I don't think, you know, our intent is to get this project out of the ground by the end of this year is our hope. Um, that if, if we got to the point where at the end of this year, we weren't in that position, I think we wouldn't, we wouldn't, uh, quickly give up on it, just like we hadn't in, for the last three years. Um, but a- after a certain period of time, certainly if the project is, continues to be infeasible, we would look to, you know, to, to figure out a way to, to offload the project and sell it.
Cool. And just to be clear, just for the record, like, we weren't holding you up for the last three years, right? You guys were running your own calculations?
That, well, c- correct. I, you know, um, that's correct. I, the only thing I would add is this particular process for the amendment has taken a very long time. We, we initially had the first initial conversation with, you know, with city planning staff, uh, over a year ago and we submitted the application, uh, in June of 2024. And so we're almost a year beyond that point, obviously. So that, that portion of it, in fact, has been difficult to overcome, but hopefully we're almost there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, city clerk, do you have the proposed, the amendment?
Yes. Would you like me to share it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, city clerk, do you have the proposed, the amendment?
Yes. Would you like me to share it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so, um, a question, discussion on the, this amendment, yeah?
Okay. Um, so this amendment would increase the proposed retail square footage, um, the, the twenty-five-hundred square feet. Uh, so this is, you have, currently there's twenty-six hundred square feet in the neighboring building and four thousand in the current building, so there's sixty-six hundred right now. Um, correct? Um, okay. Applicant may increase the proposed retail square footage to sixty-five hundred square feet. Um, so you're going from four thousand to the sixty-five hundred and so that's sixty-six hundred currently plus another twenty-five hundred. Um, and where on the plan, um, the developer mentioned this, are you, are, were you considering that? I'm looking at the, um, uh, attachment G project plans, um, page G twelve showing the site area.
Um, I, I don't have the, the sheet in front of me, but it's, you're looking at the plan. It's basically that, that, the horizontal portion of the building along Stevens Creek Boulevard is where we would fit the twenty-five-hundred square feet, uh, in. And where exactly within that, that footprint, um, that needs to be determined.
Okay. So you're saying that it would be facing Stevens Creek Boulevard where the wellness gym pool area is?
It would be in that, uh, approximate location, whether it's facing the park or whether it's on Stevens Creek Boulevard, I think we need to determine. Um, but it wouldn't be in the sort of curved portion of the building.
Okay. Um, and is the park, uh, is that accessible to members, uh, you know, living in the townhouses or the senior BMR?
Yes. Yes. That's a, that's a, a, a publicly available and open, uh, park that we're providing and maintaining in perpetuity.
Okay. And, and by the way, when you were talking about the parkland, were you, oh, there we are, looking at the image here, um, were you including this space over on Mary and, and the, the quarter circle?
No. In, in the aggregate, we're actually, um, providing some twenty-seven thousand feet of opens, open space on the whole property and that's accessible to the public. Um, but the actual park itself, that's in the center, that's, that's an aggregate, that's twelve thousand two hundred fifty square feet.
That's that portion. Okay. Um, and if you're, if you're wanting to go to retail either in, in any of these locations, your option is, are these parking spaces, uh, that, that are facing into the central green? Um, I don't know where else, I don't know where else people would park.
Yes. We, we, we need to, um, you know, allocate and designate the, that, the actual specific spots, right? So we, um, and, and, um, planning commissioners, uh, Santos brought this up, we are in fact providing the thirty-nine stalls. Um, that is the correct number that he recalled from the planning commission. And, um, so we need to allocate where those stalls go and some of those will go on that north-south road, some of them will go on the curve section on Mary. Um, and we also need to allocate where the retail goes, the retail parking goes. And I think, um, as we determine what the overall retail footprint will be and what the layout of the building will be, that will inform the, the actual parking location. Um, but, but obviously, you know, getting parking as close, um, to the retail is important.
Mm-hmm. Especially for the ADA, ADA requirements.
Correct.
Um, before we go down this more discussion on retail, I hope to get a straw vote from the council on, um, there's the question of whether we would like to, under the second option of the planning commission, to exchange twenty-five-hundred square foot of retail in exchange for three million dollar of parkland fee. I actually am willing, I'm, I'm kind of against that. I don't think it's, um, it's a worthwhile investment for the city to, in exchange for this extra retail space because there is already retail in the BMR. It's, um, so I would like to get a straw vote on that first. Um, so councilmember Wong.
Oh, I, I would just vote for the staff amendment this moment, I mean, the staff recommendation.
You would like the, to have the exchange option.
The staff recommendation doesn't have the exchange, does it?
It does.
Still does?
The, the draft resolution now include that option. If we don't want to consider that option, we need to strike number eight.
I would strike eight out then, yes.
So you would not want the exchange?
I would do the exchange.
So councilmember Mohan.
I say that because we have parkland to acquire, so.
Yeah. I would like the exchange with some, uh, protection in case the retail doesn't come through. If you're not, uh, and maybe that's a quick question for the, for the applicant. Uh, you mentioned that in your Santa Clara facility, there was some option that you, that worked. In, in the event that, uh, you have this, uh, retail space and you're not able to find a tenant, what, what is our recourse? And we've already paid you three million dollars.
Um, look, this is, um, this is the difficulty of going down this path, right? Uh, you know, and I think we made this very clear. The, the planning commission put forward this, this request and I think to try to be a good partner, we looked at the possibility to figure out how this could work, uh, in a way that's cost neutral to the developer because the cost issue is the most pressing need for us to solve, where you guys still, as a city, get some benefit. And I think, um, it does present challenges, right? That, that, um, uh, that, that arise. And, uh, one of the key components of, you know, our discussions with, with folks in the city council and the planning commission was that whatever, um, you know, sort of outline of, or mechanism that we came up with to effectuate this needed to be done very quickly so that we can actually plan this out and move forward. And, um, you know, the, the issues that councilwoman Mohan is bringing up, um, that, that, you know, once we get into the realm of trying to define what the retail is, when it's open, things like that, that starts to feel a lot like a development agreement, which again, I, I'm, you know, it, I understand the city would like potentially to look at something like that. I can just tell you that from our perspective, as, as a developer trying to get this project moving as quickly as possible, introducing some kind of, um, agreement that would take potentially three, four, five, six months to negotiate with the city, um, would be very detrimental to getting this project approved. So that's not something that we're willing to, to pursue. I think...
Yeah. I think we, we understood.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Um, so vice mayor. To exchange, what's, would you like to have the...
Uh, strike item eight.
Strike item eight. Okay. Um, councilmember Fuhr.
Since my whole purpose behind this was to try to make something that was more active and, and to give life to what the, the planning commission worked so hard to create, uh, obviously I am in favor of the motion amendment that I made.
Okay. So looks like we have a majority who would like to strike, uh, then item eight, which is the planning commission's second option. Then, um, in light of that, I guess we are not accepting the amendment, but is there still any part of this amendment you would like to be included in the motion? Such as the definition of retail, the authorization of director to may approve modifications? Because the developer is talking about potentially repositioning the retail? Would, would we want to, okay, maybe this is another straw vote. Do we, maybe I think the position of retail space, let's let the staff work it out with the developer. So number three is authorizing the director. Do we need that? Do we need the number three or...
The only, if I may, through the, through the mayor, the only problem with three is that it does include internal references to, you know, point one A. So I would have to amend this in some fashion in order to be able to make sure that it wasn't nonsense.
So I guess, uh, I can amend, uh, so here is a friendly amendment for my motion. We would strike number eight in reference, which reference to the exchange of retail versus for parkland fee. And then with that, we authorize the director of community development to approve modifications to the project plans reasonably necessary, um, to accommodate, uh, the comments from the council today and require the, I think we don't need number four. Yeah, that's it. So...
You got a second? Let's go.
Okay. So maybe we can vote?
Just a quick clarification. Is this the first, are we going with the staff recommendation, the, the original staff recommendation, which said...
The staff recommendation plus, uh, the draft resolution include the TDM and also include a promise of twenty parking space?
Correct.
That wasn't in the original staff recommendation, but it's in the recommended action of today.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so the only, uh...
Just, uh, through the mayor, I'm sorry. A quick clarification, the original draft resolution that, that staff had presented, the planning commission always included the, the twenty parking spaces as a condition of approval. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah. So I will, that's right. So the motion is the recommended action, which is a draft resolution and ADA or number one and two in the recommended action. And the draft resolution already included the TDM and the twenty extra parking spaces. It also included the exchange, which we are striking.
Which is number eight.
Yeah. And then plus the authorization for director of community, community development to, to approve modifications, uh, that in line with council's comments today. Yeah. That wasn't in the original staff recommendation, but it's in the recommended action of today.
Right. So the only?
Just through the mayor, I'm sorry. A quick clarification, the original draft resolution that staff had presented, the Planning Commission always included the 20 parking spaces as a condition of approval. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, so I will, that's right. So the motion is the recommended action, which is a draft resolution and ADA or number one and two in the recommended action. And the draft resolution already included the TDM and the 20 extra parking spaces. It also included the exchange, which we are striking.
Which is number eight.
Yeah. And then plus the authorization for Director of Community Development to approve modifications that in line with council's comments today.
You know, Mayor, I'm thinking instead of saying in line with council's comments, because there were so many comments, it could be in line with what council acts on today with the?
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Actions of council.
Reasonably necessary, I think, I trust the staff to make that judgment, yeah. Okay.
I will second it again.
Okay, that's a vote.
The amended motion carries with Mohan voting no.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I think it's long, but Councilmember one needs to leave in 10 minutes. So maybe let's try to get through the next item at least. Number 19, introduce an ordinance amending municipal code pertaining to removal of closed session start time restriction. So City Attorney, do you have a comment?
Yes, yes. And so we prepared this ordinance, and recently we prepared an alternate to the ordinance. The first ordinance that's attached to the agenda takes out the start time for closed sessions completely. But there is an argument to be made that it's a good idea to have a start time in the ordinance. And so the alternate ordinance changes the start time from 6 o'clock to 5:30. And as, you know, the member of staff who is responsible for many of the closed sessions that we present, it makes perfect sense to me to actually have 60 minutes for that activity.
Mayor, in the interest of time, would you like to go to public comment?
Yeah, okay, let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I currently see no requests to speak for this item.
Okay, thank you. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended, the staff recommendation on the agenda with the addition where the, I couldn't find the language I sent you. Do you have that language?
The language is in the bench item and?
It's in that desk item?
Through the staff report. Through the mayor, are you suggesting the 5:30 PM start?
Yeah, but then I also added some other language.
Is it the red line?
It's in addition to the red line.
Mayor, I have it here if you'd like to see it, or I'm happy to read it.
Okay. Okay. So is this a modifying? This is the modify, so this is the, what is, oh, okay. So is this on? No. So I will make a motion, this is a modified version of the red line version that's in the, in the agenda packet. The only modification is this second paragraph. The original one striked that entire paragraph out to remove the restriction for closed session to start at 6:00. And now it will read, on regular meeting days, the City Council shall reserve the time beginning at 5:30 PM for closed sessions. And that means the closed session can start likely at 5:30 or after, but we would reserve the time. So the rest is the same as the red line version. So that's my motion.
More second?
And like today, we couldn't finish the closed session in time for the regular meeting, so it would be great if we could start at 5:30.
Would you like to call a question?
Any very short comment? No, that's just vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now, next item, in 21, yeah. So study session regarding possible reactivation of the ERC, LRC, or Audit Committee. The staff recommendation is really just to refer this item back to the individual commission so that they can discuss and decide what would be the appropriate role for the committee. So ERC would go to planning, and then LRC will go to the subcommittee of the LRC, and Audit Committee's role will be reviewed by Audit Committee. So I'd like to make the motion to, oh, public comment first.
Yes, Mayor, I have one request to speak, Jennifer Griffin. I see one hand raised virtually. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council.
I'd appreciate if we are short, because Councilmember will need to leave.
I didn't know if you could hear me or not.
We can hear you.
Okay, good, yeah. I really, really, really want the ERC and the LRC to come back. They really provided a great deal of information for me. We've had both of them the entire time. I've been coming to the City Council meetings since 2002. Los Altos has Legislative Review Committee, other cities do. I'm very familiar what is going on in Santa Cruz, because my mother lives over there, my brother's over there, I've got cousins, et cetera. And with the current crop of maniacal housing bills that are coming through the state right now, especially SB 79, we have to have more information. We are in a do or die battle over SB 79. That bill has just gone chronic. I mean?
This item is not about whether to have LRC or not.
I need to know as the public. I spend all my life looking, my mother thinks Weiner's taking her house seriously, the woman's 93. So we, the public has to have this information. It cannot be withheld from us. And I think that we need the ERC back, because everyone heard what was going on on these lots. The LRC was, it paid for itself. The time that the public has to spend, I mean, I would demand this information, because the city, we're being reamed. So please, please, put it back. And I don't think the public had any input when it was taken away. So yes, I demand that they come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And now we will move to those requests to speak virtually. We have San R. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I am in favor of a very focused charter for the LRC that is only on bills that are local control-related items. Specifically, I want to make sure that the diversity of input from Cupertino Restaurants is factored for. The council does not speak to the diversity of part that Cupertino Restaurants have. There is clearly a disconnect between some councilmembers that stand for environmental issues and do not value quality of life, as we just saw, versus the vast number of young families that we have in Cupertino that want you to solve the basics for us, which is keep density out of single-family neighborhoods, keep crime out of neighborhoods, and bring us our quality of life. So clearly, there's a huge disconnect between this council and certain people on this council and what residents expect of you. So for you to spend more time on state legislation and environmental legislation while not meeting the basic needs of residents is missing the mark. So I ask you to not authorize the ERC, please direct it to the Planning Commission, and for the LRC limited, the most limited number of items that focus on retaining local control. And specifically, do not authorize environmental and sustainability, which is a hurdle to local businesses, and imposes unreasonable regulations like the single-use ordinance and the gas ban appliance ordinance that is now being looked at, and then this, this whole right turn, no right turn on the right with these intersection changes. So please keep environmental and sustainability completely out of this, because we are polar opposites on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak.
Thank you. For the public's information, previously, LRC follows the legislative platform that was usually approved by the council in January, which area to watch, to monitor, or to support or oppose. So then LRC will discuss how this might, we might do going forward if we approve the recommended action. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended action for these three committees.
More second?
Okay. Any short comments?
I just want to make a quick comment on the LRC. I think it's really important for us to be abreast on the issues. We may not all agree on those issues, but having a heads up is important, and that's really why. I think there are a lot of times when you won't know that legislative action is happening without having someone in Sacramento to give you that input. We're a city, but we are up against big forces, and there's a lot of money going after cities. And if we don't defend our cities, we can't defend our residents. And so I disagree with Mr. San's comment. I would just say that it's important to have that input.
Okay, Councilmember Fruen, and Vice Mayor Mohan.
Primarily to the City Attorney, as the question of the ERC goes back to the Planning Commission to, in particular, be mindful of, for housing development projects, the fact that imposing an additional hearing requirement would eat one of the hearings that would be available under the Housing Crisis Act. And I think that that's important information for both the council and the Planning Commission to know. So if there is a means for economizing that in terms of where this goes and what it winds up being, I think that would be valuable. With respect to the LRC, you know, I watched just about every meeting of the LRC when we used to have it, and I really don't see the benefit that it has managed to provide. I think that if, you know, we need briefing on stuff that is happening in Sacramento, there is a much better and more efficient way to get that than this committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. I think, yeah, it's a good comment that it's important when the, each individual committee consider these items, they, the staff will provide information, potential legal limits on them, and I think also potential staffing time will be required for any recommendation that they make. So I trust the staff will provide those information to help inform their decision.
Yes, we will, thank you.
Thank you. And then let's vote.
Motion carries with Fruen voting no.
Okay, thank you so much. Then we go back to item 20, which is to accept the Q3 financial report. Yeah, thank you. Let's take a short five-minute break. Accept the City Manager's third quarter financial report for fiscal year 2024-25.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have, this is the third quarter financial report for fiscal year 2425, which outlines the city's financial status as of March 31st of this year. And to present this item, I have Christine Alfaro, the Director of Administrative Services, and her team, and I will turn it over to staff now.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will try to make this presentation brief, but there's a lot of good news in this report. All right, so on our agenda, we'll review the third, we'll give you third quarter update, focusing primarily on the general fund in terms of where we are. Then we'll go over proposed third quarter budget adjustments, and then we'll cover our roadmap and next steps. So with that, jumping right into the third quarter update. Overall, this is showing our revenues versus expenditures from the adopted budget, and this is just for the general fund, from the adopted budget to the amended budget as of March 31st, 2025. As you'll be able to see here, you can see the estimated use of fund balance has grown since we adopted the budget. One of the primary drivers is due to our carryover process at year end, but in addition to that, there are some other major drivers that are increasing the use of fund balance from the 7.7 as of December 31st to March 31st, 2025. They include $2.5 million for an enterprise resource planning software, 1.2 million for a video control room, and an additional $2 million transfer to the capital reserve. In this next slide, we break down fund balance a bit further at the classification level. So here, we want to highlight a couple of items. We see in, sorry, the first thing is unassigned fund balance is growing slightly in this third quarter projection. In addition, we see that the restricted category is growing just a little bit, and this is because we missed an update at mid-year to tie out to our ACFA. So this is now matching the 23.3 item, so going back to 23, 24, 23.3 minus the 1.2 million for the video room gets us to the 22.1. And lastly, we're also calling out, we think we did this as part of final, or proposed budget as well, but that we're moving encumbrances out of assigned and into unassigned. And then lastly, we just want to point out that the committed reserve remains untouched there. And that includes our economic uncertainty and our reserve for future use. So moving on to third quarter recommended or proposed budget adjustments. Overall, you can see that we are recommending that expenditures decrease by a little over 157,000, with revenues increasing by about 5.4 million. We're going to dig a little deeper into the request in the following slide. Again, this first slide is focusing just on the general fund. So overall, in non-departmental, you'll see we're recommending a four-point, about a $4.5 million increase to our sales tax projection. This is primarily due to funds received to date and also taking into account our settlement agreement with CDTFA. CDTFA, we believe this will be a close, closer to the number at which we will end the year. The next yellow highlighted area, and we're just using the highlights to call out each different department, is for our Community Development Department. And our Community Development Department is requesting some funds to cover bank charges, and this is due to the credit card transaction fee not being able to be implemented as quickly into our systems as we would have liked, so we're asking for these funds. In addition, there's also requests for on-call contracts for inspection, along with increased processing fees for citation fees. This also aligns with increased collection for citations as well. Next, moving on to our Parks and Rec Department. Parks and Rec is requesting an increase for bank charges as well, along with an increase for part-time staffing. The part-time staffing is being driven by greater, greater than anticipated participation in our creek tours at McClellan Creek, at McClellan Ranch, along with swim lessons at Blackberry Farm. This is offset by an increased revenue from rentals and programs. In Public Works, you'll see overall, there are some increases being recommended, 50,000 for a bunker wall at the service center, Portal Park emergency tree removal, the tree has already been removed, this is asking for the funding to backfill that expense. In addition, the purchase of grates for trees here at service center, which poses a safety issue for anyone visiting the civic center. And also signage at McClellan Ranch Park entrance, that, I believe the sign is over 30 years old at this point, it's kind of run down, we'd like to replace that. The largest item here for Public Works is a defunding of various projects. There is a detail for all the projects being recommended to be defunded, they're included in Attachment E. I will go very quickly over some of the high-level items included. One is to defund the council work program on recycled water feasibility, saving $200,000. This was a project that was done in-house, and thus did not result in additional cost. The second is the Quinlan Community Center Security Project, to be funded at almost 70,000, and this is a project that came in under budget, along with the partial defunding of the electrification study. This is one, again, that has been completed and has come in under budget. With that, moving over to all of the other non-general fund funds, you'll see another request from Public Works as part of our special revenue fund to defund the Pumpkin and Fiesta Storm drain project. Again, this is a project that has also been completed. In the capital funds, you will notice- In the capital funds, you will notice some text in red. We did provide some desk items that just corrected, the way we had this listed, the attachment that shows all the ins and outs was correct, and we just needed to update this chart, but it will be updated in the staff report and in the financial report, and we went ahead and updated it in the PowerPoint as well. And what this is here is defunding of various CIP projects totaling $208,000, in addition to increasing revenue in the capital reserve by 293.55. Overall, it's increasing the change in fund balance by 498,355, and that's a positive. Lastly, for the enterprise funds, we have Public Works, once again, defunding the cap dashboard pilot. And then for Parks and Recreation, we see the reduction of bank charges, but also increase in revenue as well. Overall, we already talked about the overall number, but we're anticipating changing, increasing fund balance by almost, by about 5.6 million dollars. Staffing, there's no recommended changes to staffing as part of the third quarter. The city manager discretionary fund, as of March 31st, discretionary fund was used for the year-end employee town hall and Lawrence Smithy. Those expenses totaled about $13,600. We also anticipate using about an additional $5,000 to fund public service appreciation week events that occurred in the first week of May. Next steps and recommendations. This will bring us to our roadmap. We're almost at the end here. This third quarter update wraps up our reporting for the current fiscal year, and we will be back on June 3rd at the final budget adoption and hearing. The recommendations are before you on the screen. They have been updated because we're off by a dollar, and so these have been corrected and should align with the desk item as well. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. So I noticed there are a number of items which were added today to the uploaded documents for this item. And so I'd like to go through each one and understand what the changes were, because I had already downloaded the agenda packet, and then I was surprised to see all of these. And I cannot, apparently, there is a supplemental report. And, okay, so I want to say that this, this new format, I'm, I'm having a really hard time with it in the agenda. I'm, it's just, it's a run-on sentence, and I'm, I'm having a very difficult time finding anything. Okay, so I see that the supplemental report, instead of being something I could identify easily, and it's not, this is not a you issue, this is a formatting issue, that something's changed. So I used to be able to find the supplemental reports very easily, and now I, I did find it buried in, in a list of 16 items, which are done in paragraph form. So, let's see, the first one, well, let's just look at this. So you've added this supplemental report, would, can you give me a high level, or can someone show it up on the screen, what that supplemental report is showing?
We're trying to see if we can get that pulled up now.
Okay. And then, I'd want to know what, what changed with Attachment B, D, I? Let's see. And I thought there was a change to, so you, yeah, I thought there was a change to Attachment F as well, the special projects I was looking at.
So as Tony here pulls up the supplemental report, let me, so Attachment B was off by a dollar, and so we made that adjustment to Attachment B to the reso.
Okay, so that's item, item 13. Okay. Um, thank you.
Sorry, item, uh...
14 is, is amended Attachment D, description of carryovers. Is that, again, a dollar?
So Attachment D was amended because it was March 31st, 2024, carryovers and amendments that were attached, so we wanted to attach the correct one for March 31st, 2025. So it was the incorrect item that was attached.
Okay. So that one, need to, I need to focus on and look at that. Okay. And...
And then, I believe we also added a new Attachment I because of the change, the adoption of the city council's special project policy. We had agreed to come back and show you the, the special projects in its entirety at third quarter, plus the abbreviated list. And so we had, what we had left out was the abbreviated list of, based on the definition in the council's special project policy, what would continue to be shown as part of the special project attachment. So it's a, it's a much more shorter list than what's currently on here for special projects.
Okay. So I printed out Attachment F, the third quarter special projects, but the, the staff report seemed to indicate that this, that this one already had the, the special projects that didn't qualify removed, but...
It meant to have both, and so this Attachment E is everything. So what the new Attachment I is, is it's just taking out those selected items that would continue to be reported on as a special project. So the list was all-inclusive that was included, and then we provided an updated list that aligns with the policy definition.
Okay. So will I somewhere see what was removed?
So we can provide that list as well. It's just the difference between the two, but we can provide that, we can give you the, this is what got removed, and this is what's still off.
Okay. That would be great, because like Attachment F still has city work program items in it. And so does I have those, or no?
No. So I has removed all the city work program, any ongoing projects, any small equipment repairs or projects or replacements, like small maintenance projects, sorry, couldn't find the words there, that are no longer considered a special project.
Okay. So kind of, oh, and then I wanted to see the supplemental report.
Yes, so we do have the supplemental report ready to put up on screen.
Okay. Is it multiple pages? Yeah. So my concern is, I would actually want to have some more time, because there were so many additional pages. And then we've made the change with special projects, and I, I want to understand what, what got removed with this new plan. And this is one of those things where I wish the audit committee was tasked with like the first look at this before it came to council, because there's a lot of information here to, to work on. So you...
So, yeah, I think the video can share the screen. Oh, no. Hold on. Oops. Hold on, I would maybe go back to the, this is, includes question one and two on the screen. With question one response, let us know when you're ready to move to the second page.
Just, I saw the five minutes is already up, so maybe we can see if any other council member has question? And, oh, we haven't taken public comments yet, right? Have we? So anyone else has question?
I had a quick question for staff. All the, the defunding, defunded items that you listed, they're, they're all not consciously, the project hasn't been defunded, it's just that the project has been completed and this is the leftover funding, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, would you like to yield your time to Vice Mayor?
Yes, sure.
So, thank you. And I think she spends the most time on budget. I have a short question, so thank you for the answer in the supplemental. So there are 21 vacant positions? Not sure if I counted right, right now, that we are doing, but we are doing vacant recruitment on them.
Correct. For the majority of the positions listed, there is a recruitment either currently underway or will be one shortly.
So there is no plan to cut any of them right now?
Uh, there are currently no plans to reduce any positions.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll eul the rest of my time to Vice Mayor, too.
So we could, thank you, Mayor, we could, can receive the, the list of special projects which have been removed. I did have a question about how to, like, the first two items, the 127,000 special project for PR and strategic communication strategy, that was when I had a question about how that appeared on this list, because I couldn't locate a special project request at the, at the budgeting time within, within the past year's budget. And so I was wondering, I think we were trying to, it's saying, it's saying that it was added in fiscal year 2024, but I, just because I didn't see it in the approved budget doesn't mean it wasn't there. Is this saying that if I go to the adopted budget for 2324, I should locate that?
Yes, so...
And then if I want to have it, if we want to defund it, do we have that prerogative? And then, when would be the right time to do that?
Uh, for the first question, I'll actually defer to Acting City Manager China Kapoor, as this was a project that was headed out of the city manager's office. They should be able to respond to that. For the second question about the defunding, you could add it to the motion this evening to have it removed as part of third quarter, and then we'll go ahead and update the reso and all those items to include the defunding of that item.
Oh. So we can actually line item, remove these projects at this time?
The way you would, so at any budget hearing, we're looking for things to add or delete. The only concern I might have, and I would defer to the city attorney, is how this was noticed, if that was, if it was noticed sufficiently, that we didn't say we were going to be going line by line. Not that we'd have to say it that specifically, but that folks may not know that items would be up for defunding, and that they might have been here to potentially, you know, give their opinion on if a project should be defunded or not. That would be my only concern, but again, I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
The attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor, if I might comment, that the subject is listed as accept the city manager's third quarter financial report.
So, yeah, I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, I would agree. You could accept or deny the report, but to move through it in this detail, I'm not sure that it's agendas appropriately for that.
Yeah. I think we could ask council, like last time, to submit potential items for consideration, and then, next time, maybe when the budget adoption, we could consider those, right?
That, that's correct, Mayor. So between the last budget studies session we had last week, and when we come back with final budget adoption, council can provide, you know, you can provide your input to staff. You can email me any questions or any input. And just to quickly address Vice Mayor, your question about the, the PR strategy item, so that is, it's actually an item that staff is recommending we defund, it's just the timing of it didn't work out as we had expected, but that definitely is no longer moving forward.
Pardon? Through, through the mayor, because these special projects are carried over from prior years, what's been happening when we go to approve the budget is we'll see a kind of like a fresh list of special projects each time, and then we're not given the old list of what's still out there. So we don't have an opportunity then to remove anything either. So if we can't remove it, and items now, because it wasn't noticed this way, how, how are we going to have that opportunity? Well, may we ask that these, that all the special projects, from whether they have been relabeled, they're no longer special projects or not, that they come to us for the June 3rd meeting as an attachment with the opportunity written in the, in the, in, in the agenda for us to be able to remove? Can that be something that we ask for, and that have happened?
I believe we could pull it out, but I just want to check in with Christina, if that's something we could do for June 3rd agenda?
Uh, we, we could. I think I would just like a more narrowed list, so that we know which items want to be discussed, and then we can notice it that way. Otherwise, we'd be noticing it for all of the special projects. I think it just helps staff pull together information they might need if they know which ones specifically we may be looking at, similar to CIP.
Wait, do we have to identify the projects to, I thought when we adopt a budget, at the time, at the meeting, I've seen council add or remove items when they adopt budget. So wouldn't this would be similar to, this is, I mean, we could have an attachment that collect maybe suggestions from council members for consideration, and then we can, at that time, just make a motion to accept or not, to, to, to have a list, or that way we'll consider for removal. Do we need to identify them in the subject line for them?
I think we could bring back the full list. I think what I'm asking for is a little more clarification on which projects you have an interest in defunding, in case there's some other financial impact for defunding those. So understanding which ones you're looking for specifically is just going to assist staff in terms of workload, versus assuming that every project is up for potential defunding.
Yeah, but what I mean is likely we won't be able to have, give you that right here. So it will be like last, the CIP, we probably would go back and give you a list later, and then you would give us an estimate of the impact of the funding.
Correct. So, sorry, not asking for that this evening. I think what I would ask for, similar to what our Acting City Manager asked for, is that some sort of list be sent to her, and then we can compile the report for June 3rd.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That would work there, yeah.
Yeah. So quite, sorry, using up the time. So the, for the PR and the strategic communication, do we have a consultant contract for that?
We do not.
We do not?
Oh, yeah. This is a project that's long been closed, and the, like I said, the defunding request timing was a little off, but it should, yeah, it's no longer in the works.
Yes, yes, through, through the mayor, so when I look at the 2024 special projects list that was approved, I, I don't see this particular one, and it seemed almost like it showed up during one of the quarterly special projects updates was my, my issue with that one. So I'm glad to know that it's defunded. And so, in looking at various projects for potential defunding, I would personally be looking at ones that have, have zero actual amount for expenses and no encumbrances. And for some of these, it's, it's my preference that as the year goes on, that if there's a new special project that's, that wanted to be started, perhaps, you know, I see some... I see some here that are from years past. There's one from fiscal year 2022. And the money hasn't been spent yet. There's nothing, nothing appears to be done on it. So that would be something that we don't want to have that money earmarked if that's no longer something that that department's really interested in, is the issue with that. So it's not that these aren't great projects. It's that we're appropriating funds, and some of these appropriations are hanging out there for multiple years. And we, I would prefer that they come back and ask, you know, like at the end of the year. So I think there might be a policy issue with regards to special projects. So we want to continue thinking about how this is working. Thank you.
Yeah, sounds like what we need is department to make budget requests. But maybe each year, department should also look through existing project and see which ones could actually, this would be great if this comes from the department. I think, for example, I can see Row 3, fiscal, it was funded in fiscal year 20. That's five years ago. And 239805 for general fund, planning, mid-long-term planning. And it has, zero has been spent so far. It's still in progress after five years. So what does that mean? That is curious. So maybe department can review this and even give us their recommendation on what items should, actually is not making progress after many years and should be taken off.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that, you know, we, I definitely hear you and the concerns that council shared today. We have been talking about special projects with council. I believe the policy we've started in those discussions. Let me take the feedback from tonight, and then I'll, you know, I'll work with Christina to see if there's a better way for us to present this information. It is somewhat timely, but we are in a time crunch as well for the budget adoption. But we'll, you know, we'll take this into consideration. And please send me any additional information or, you know, particular projects you would like us to focus on.
So I just shared the screen so the public knows what I'm talking about. This is a document in one of the attachment. And this is the third row. It's funded in 2020, and then it's zero spent. And so, and there are another item funded in '17, and 194, zero dollars spent so far. So it would be curious to maybe clean, to find our status. And it might be best if the information comes from the department, who knows these projects best, rather than us recommending, yeah.
Yep, thank you for the feedback, and appreciate you being open to departments bringing information according to what the status might be.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Quick comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I think that should be part of the final budget deliberations where we actually renew the special projects list.
I believe, I believe we're all on the same page about that. Like on June 3rd, if we can bring a little bit more information on these projects.
And just to clarify, they should be separate items?
Probably.
Two separate items, okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe a separate agenda item, one specifically to review special projects, yeah.
But on June 3rd?
On June 3rd, yeah. Likely before the budget adoption, I think. Yeah, okay. Any other, oh, public comment?
I see no request to speak on the side of Mayor.
Okay, then back to the council. Any more question comments on Q3? And thank you, staff, for updating the report even when there is a $1 difference. And it is a bit confusing when we didn't get so many attachments, but didn't know what was changed. So if that could be, maybe that's describing supplemental report I didn't read. But thank you for your, your, you're trying to be so accurate. Yeah, thank you for making that effort. So anyone else? Okay, do we need to move? Do we need to vote to accept? Okay.
Yeah, I move that we accept the, I move that we accept the City Manager's third quarter financial report for fiscal year 2024, 25, and adopt the resolution number 25-035, approving budget modification number 2425-390, decreasing appropriations by negative 157, 425, and increasing estimated revenues by 5 million, 411, 435.
Okay, second. Shouldn't we just vote? Oh, oh, I second, yeah, okay.
The motion carries with Wong absent.
Okay, now it's 10:25. We have time for a City Manager report. And City Manager has provided a written report. And now we have time, maybe we can get an oral one.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And it's late, so I'm going to keep it brief. I did include a printed City Manager's report in the agenda. Just happy to share some recent highlights and upcoming events in Cupertino. Last week, we celebrated Bike to Work Day. And earlier this month, Mayor Chow, you held your monthly chat with residents at Lee's Sandwiches. Lee's Sandwiches, yes. And it was very well attended, featured neighboring businesses as well. The city also celebrated Public Service Recognition Week by honoring our dedicated staff. Looking ahead, as you'll notice in my report, we will be hosting our annual pride flag raising ceremony on June 2nd at 4:00 p.m. And we are looking forward to seeing everybody there. There's also a ribbon cutting for our newly renovated all-inclusive playground at Jolly Men Park. That's on June 13th at 1:00 p.m., and the community is invited to join in. And the only, the only another item that was not in my printed report, we received information on this a little bit later after agenda was posted, and I'll share this tonight, is that the Sheriff's Office will host their Coffee with the Cop event at the Stevens Creek Starbucks on May 28th at 8:00 a.m. So if anybody's interested, please join. And with that, thank you very much.
Great. Now the council member reports. I do want to mention something about the upcoming Mayor's Initiative events. On May, this Saturday, May 24th, we have the AAPA Multicultural Festival. In collaboration with that, we are hosting a Cupertino art exhibition in the community hall. And Toyokawa Sisters City will also be displaying their art from the Student Exchange Program at the time. And then on June 1st, it's the Sunday afternoon, we are, there will be an event right here in collaboration with a local organization, Tech Icon. It's a podcast. They interview entrepreneurs. So they are interviewing, we will have an in-person interview of two Cupertino entrepreneurs at that time. And then we are hoping to collect their story for Cupertino Stories Project. And on June 8th, we will have a dance in the Plaza Event, the second one, on a Sunday afternoon. So check, you can Google Cupertino Mayor's Initiative. Then you'll find the Mayor's Initiative site for any updates. Thank you. Okay, and the next Mayor's Chat, of course, will be the second Monday of June. Okay, anyone would like to have something else to add? And we would adjourn the meeting.